I'll roll call, I would like to take a moment of silence for our own trustees, Imam, who's been a very useful part here in the village. She has passed away, so I would ask for a moment of silence for her at this point. All right, thank you so much. I'm going to put a big step in the road.
Trustee Bill.
Here.
Trustee Rowan here. Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Chesensky. Trustee Todd here. Trustee William here.
Okay, we go right into the presentations. The first one, now I'm just going to be sponsored by trustee Finch, it's going to be MSI, I'm sorry, Treasury French. I'm promoting or demoting that quick. MSI software proposal by Dan McDown. I see you're all set, so can you come right up? I don't think he does, he's just... Yes, go ahead. Mr. Finch, you don't have anything to add to this?
No.
Okay. Mr. McDown, you have the people who are proposing for the MSI software.
I'm thinking of giving the access to the local authority.
Not online, just everywhere you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Hey, is that right, the one?
Here it is.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be adding next to you. I need your help. I want to open the mic here.
Thank you so much. My name is Dan McDown, I'm a sales manager of...
You have power.
Sales manager of MSI, that's municipal systems, and also the sales manager of MCSI. My name is Dan McDown, I'm a sales manager of MSI, which is Municipal Systems Incorporated in Taylor City, Illinois. I'm also a sales manager for a company called municipal collection service, which uses us for collections. They are two separate companies, but they're one of the state's principal. MSI is a software company, and we have various applications that are used by many of the suburbs or municipalities surrounding the area, to be the adjudication, including the parking software, vehicle sticker, and animal tag, a lot of the arrangements, taking a few we have.
You can't just take them right out.
This is good, I'll get it closer here. And we have over seventy customers on the MSI side, actually have over a hundred customers using MCSI collections. So some of the things that I'm going to cover today related to the ticketing and adjudication software, I'm actually going to cover a couple different modules. The ticketing and adjudication, and it's also my understanding that we may be looking to bring permitting and inspection services in-house. We have software to manage that as well, I can cover as much of that as I would like to do. But the software, some of the features within the software is completely available, issuing track tickets that can be done with paper tickets, and then when you enter, you can do it in the office, or you have slide ticketing, you have ticketing with tablets, and we have smartphones, which can be used for parking tickets. That's typically more useful if you have a tablet on there, or you have CSO walking around. We interface with leads, we actually have two types of interface. One would be a direct connection with the state police. The other would be if you have an RMS CAD system where you run a leads query, you can parse that data out from your squad laptop directly into our ticket. Ultimately, you're saving tons of time for officers to enter and take their warrants. Our software supports citations, it supports points, it has a administrative total process, so you can automate that process as well. There's a workflow setup that basically just allows me to determine what highlight I'm looking for with my tickets. An example might be if you had repeat offenses, all grass, and that was getting a hundred dollars or fifty dollars fine, it wasn't getting someone's attention based on the number of times that that ticket is issued, you can escalate those fines. That's all driven by the workflow. But you can attach photographic images to your tickets, which we talked about the benefits of that, and that can be done either by taking a picture and uploading it, or if you're using a tablet, you can use the onboard camera with the tablet, take photographs, they'll be seamlessly attached to either tickets, or even if you're using our inspection product, it'll be attached to inspections. You can have added limited notes, you have an online credit card payment service, so as tickets are issued, they are immediately saved in the database. For someone wanting to pay a ticket, they can pull on and pay a ticket within five minutes of that ticket being issued. Currently, it's my understanding that there's no online payment process in place. Now, I'll cover some of the things, I did a discovery, but I interviewed people here and found out some of the things about our current system, your current technology, and I'll point out some of the benefits of our system over what we're doing today. Automatic generation of notices. The docket and the actual period process is, there's electronic check-in, electronic docket, you can on-demand or auto-generated, you find the paperwork, make it very easy to manage. E-curbing controls for generating reports or exporting data. We have the software to address minors, it addresses ceiling records, it addresses record expulsion, all things that have come along recently in the state statutes. Control frequency and time for sending records to collections, I'm going to embellish on that a little bit, because that's an ongoing issue right now, it's actually costing another money. It's a hosted environment, so there's no server that needs to be purchased. We provide the servers, we do your data backups, we have a big operating system on the server, so really you're just going to be using the software at the device as that means. And this particular product, 4360, is a new solution. We've been in business since nineteen ninety-one. First product was DOS, then it was Windows, then it was client server, then it was web-based. Today, it's a browser-based solution, it's brand-new technology, so what benefit would that bring to the village? You'll be getting in on new technology, that means the life of the software to use will be extended drastically by being a new technology. So some of the benefits that are going to come along with some of the features that I mentioned. You're going to reduce or eliminate back office data entry if you happen to implement squad or tablet ticketing. That requires workers to be in squads, so you have to contend with some hard work versus others. But, a typical ticket today, in environments where they hand-write, it can take two or three minutes to hand-write a ticket, and another couple minutes to feed that ticket in. In our system, because of the way we developed it, the drop-docks, it takes about forty seconds to have your ticket in. So the amount of savings based on the number of tickets I'll put them on another side is pretty significant. So you have less time, data entry time, greater efficiency for your officers. Citations are going to be immediately added to the database upon entering a tenant, so they are available, they will be online, they will be listed. Photographic evidence at hearing is going to create less disputes, and that can find that out in the municipalities and users' software. All required paperwork can be credited at the hearing, or after the hearing is over, if you didn't want to have a prayer at the hearing, you can have it. With our system, though, we do what we call a subscription. There's no upfront cost if you want to go with a subscription. We also do provide options for municipalities, if they want to pay a larger sum upfront, they can, we discount that price, but typically there is no upfront cost to go with our product. And with this new software, it's going to be a much greater user experience than what is currently being used. So, I did a discovery, and I talked to a few people, I talked to Sue, I talked to Nikki, I talked with anything about some of the challenges and some of the things that people face. Based on the volume of tickets that are issued, the mobile ticket would reduce data entry at maybe eight hours a month. So there's some immediate savings. You could also eliminate group of ticket posts, more savings. Right now, the village hall has limited or no access to the ticketing system. So when the MSI software, the group can go within on the number of users, they don't have a user account, you can install wherever you want, so if you need village hall personnel to have query and main capabilities, you can set that up, and they'll be able to make payment on any ticket. And because the technology itself is almost consolidated database, and I'm pointing out some of the other applications, you will be able to see if somebody had a building code violation, if they had a parking ticket, they had a yellow violation, and vehicle sticker that they were due. Even that will point where if you move into the permitting and inspectional software, if someone paid into the paper ticket, you'd also see that, or if they gave in paper permit, you'd see if they had a building code violation or parking ticket. You're not, so you can't, you can't allow payment on the permit, do you pay for everything? So you'll live off that. So right now, as I'm saying, there's no option in your system to electronically attach photographic evidence, so if somebody picked a photo, they could print the paperwork at the hearing. Most systems really don't have to print the paperwork before going to a hearing. If you had twenty people on the docket, and only three people show up at the time they start in, you say print the paperwork for those three people, that's all I'm looking at at this point. But I was told also that there's no internal option or control for printing notices internally, that you have to contact your IT department to print your hearing notices. This control will be now at the fingertips of the owners. So we have expanded recording capabilities, and the ability to export data to itself. I know when I was here, there were several limited recording capabilities, ways to analyze data, we could certainly expand on that. This next point, internal control of sending files to collections. This is an issue, and this issue is also in the village line. The reason I say that is, files do not get sent to us on a regular basis like other customers. Our customers should use the MSI software, go through a process, and the process is this, show me all the records that need to go to collections. I see my list, push the button, they are now in collections. That does not happen in Soft Village. Every five or six months, I need to contact their IT department, say please send us files. So why would that cost money? Well, there are all the municipalities that surround Soft Village are currently enrolled in the IOC World Recovery Program. That is a date and time-based program, so when municipalities like Lindwood, Creek, University Park, Heart Forest, Chicago Heights, Steger, Rich Street Park, Madison, end up sending their files, they are getting in a, in a, I mean, back end, and they're getting to the IOC. Those are all MCSI businesses, and they're all using MSI software. So, strangely enough, people who get tickets in Soft Village also get tickets in Chicago Heights, they get tickets in Creek, they get tickets in University Park, they get tickets in Lindwood, they get tickets in Riverdale, and if they get their files in first, they're getting paid first. Two five-hundred-dollar tickets paid in a month would be, somehow. So, this, and the other problem is, what files won't pay to us in a timely fashion? They come back and just burn it all at night. Tickets that sit for six months, made it through the hearing process, they've been through a administrative review, so they don't make it to collections until two or three months after somebody's bought five. How many sit for six months? Nine months later, somebody, you know, that's just going to make that into a different budget. The other benefit is, you're using the MSI software, because we're in the same building, and somebody better has a way to ask for a copy of the ticket. If they do, the MSI staff, or MCSI staff can just contact MSI and say, can you give us a copy of that ticket? And alternatively, you push the button for the building department, they might actually do that. So, with the discovery and the conclusions slash assumptions that we made, your current software is written in outdated technology. It's an access database which is old, that has challenges with multi-users, and there will be challenges then, being able to upgrade computers to the operating system, because there are going to be some dispatches in operating systems and technology. So, it would be, these are the ones who need that you're going to upgrade and, particularly this, as challenges. With that aside, there are enhancements and upgrades that are done on a regular basis. So an example would be, if state statutes change, and the software needs to change, we make sure those changes happen on a regular basis, and expulsion would pay back. We make sure we have that into the software very quickly. And we have seventy-plus sites, so they're getting us input on things that happen, rather than having just one user and making everyone use our software. So, the other thing is, we have current technology, this is a brand-new system, it has the latest technology, it has a great user experience, most user screens, and also has what they call API, application programming interface architecture. What that does, that will allow you to connect up with other systems, as long as they are the same, so you have a new accounting system, et cetera. Well, we have tickets that we pay here, but we want it to be in the AR system here, we don't want to have to recreate it. Our technology allows us to connect up, et cetera, with files very easily. Yeah, I don't know what system you're using, I don't want to make a blanket statement, connect up with anyone, because that would not be correct, but using current technology in other markets, it's much easier to do that. So, first off, is there any questions? I covered a lot of common, I covered very quickly, is there any questions on what I mentioned?
I do have one quick one. Current, our current software that we have, I don't know if you're familiar with that, do we have to upgrade that in order to get this, or can you mesh with our current software? Do we have to change our software?
Which software?
Civic.
The what?
Civic.
Civic systems?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's your county software.
Right.
In fact, we have already done an interface with Civic systems, with one another client, where we pass some consensual data from our ticketing system. So, no, absolutely not, those, that system will be fine in place, it's going to use rules, which would be, I'm guessing, for financials, or any water bill, and all those types of functions. No, you don't have to worry about these parts. This is it, the most proper form to demonstrate software, and I remember just having screen capture, so you can get an idea of what the system has. This is a property search, and the biggest point that I want to make out, or make in time, here, is, this is, if I was going to search property, here's where I would put the search information in, and now here's where I'm getting the results. But what I, so I pointed out, before I come in and I'm property, you look over at this 360 property, you ask where you can see everything, so if you, if the village said we are also looking for software managed contract or license, managed permits, managed inspections, managed service requests, managed business licensing. 360 property management will allow us to do that. In addition to our ticketing, and what happens in this 360 view is where people can see anything that's going on in the property, it's the foundation for our software. We will load a property database, and then build around it, years to be stopped required, then you use 360 property management in order to use our ticket, so I want to point that out. So when you're going in, in your top view of your system, up here, it's got people, which is where we deal contractors, properties, and that's going to be emergency inspections. And we've got vehicle information, violations. The violations is the part that we're talking most about right now, most searched and violations in tickets. So, what we, in the drop-docks, there it gives me the option, and again, it's a little bit hard to see, if you say search, or as new, so I can go search a ticket, I can go enter a ticket. Once I end up selecting, I can now select the type of ticket, whether it's going to be building code ticket, or a home ordinance ticket, or a parking type ticket. So, everything, this is going to be made out of the same type of project, search project, property view, my details. So if I decided I wanted to search a ticket, once I get that information, yeah, this will be somebody who the village designate as being the access to the software. So you can search, set people to be able to pay, people who have the rights to head, and changes can do that. So, basically, just you have your entry points, you have your building code, your order, this entry screen, so I'm not going to go through, it's not a lot of time, you know, entry, you can take this, or show me all the entry part, you know, I just wanted to show you some of the consistency in looking at the, your local ticketing options, your ability to be able to pull up and print the notices, your ability to be able to check people into a docket, and have your hearing officer, or whoever's assisting the hearing officer, be able to take cases in whatever time they're called. So, I don't know, if you let me know, if the village is also looking to do permitting and inspections, or those type, or if that is still, what I think I thought is that was still to be determined, so if you're looking for that type of software, but I am going to defer those screens at this point, because I want us to start trying to demonstrate software, or something, if you're going to decide to get what you're going to do. But, this particular slide will tell you what the property agents inside will be able to do as well, along with the ticketing. Okay? And that covers what I wanted to just review today, is our system, is there any questions that anyone can ask?
Yeah. Make a question at price. Make sure they help to, I'm sure you got a lot of allocation, so, basic price to get, just for the ticketing, for, I guess it would be for building permits, and then coal, that's basically coal, and for the Creek Park.
Yeah, the, and I know everyone has a copy of the holdings or not, it's via, the software itself, the local ordinance, and building code, are all lit?
Lit, lit, right.
The pricing will be in a separate document, it will be in the same document, if you need one, I have extras.
No, I didn't get that.
See, the document will work.
Right. You have to second, I didn't get that.
So, there is a page, second page from the end of this document, that has pricing for the ticketing and adjudication software, it's done, and basically, it's what we call software as a service, so you're paying a subscription for it. The license for the software without hold is eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. You have a local ticket to that, it is two hundred dollars a month, total will be one thousand fifty for the license. There's a little bit of setup involved in these interfaces, and then that will be a thirty-six-month agreement. Training is twenty-five hundred dollars.
You have four, okay, for a loan?
Yes. And the reason, we actually have three houses, we have one that's specific to parking, one that's specific to local ordinance, which local ordinance has a parking ticket, it's a local ordinance violation. We typically say parking is vehicle-related, local ordinance subject-related, building code property-related. The way you are writing your parking tickets are just like a local ordinance violation. So, you want to feel the local ordinance mind, and you don't need to have the parking specific one.
And upgrades?
All upgrades are included. Any advancements, what I think would be included, is if we wrote, like you did today, if we wrote a brand-new solution from the ground up, we don't upgrade equal when it's a brand-new solution applied. If you're on a platform, so you're on this platform right now, which is 4360, all enhancements, fixes, posting, it's all included with the device, I'm going to support included with the device, so if you ever, if anybody needs any help, they can call our office, and any support question is answered, that's all covered as well too.
And then, the, well, I guess you're talking, friends, and things like that, that you're talking about, is that, I'm, I'm sure it's a memory.
For the printers?
Yeah, for the printers, for the cars.
The printers aren't something that we provide. Municipalities can buy printers for less than a million, buy printers for, so you may have them in the squads already, I didn't know that, any of them.
Not printers? You do have computers, but not printers?
Not printers, yeah, you would need printers, and you have to buy printers for good vehicles, except any of the municipalities have printers in the squads, they're typically the Z book four-inch wide printers, if you don't, absolutely need to allocate dollars for printers, because that's the line you're saving, so I didn't, you wouldn't have to do local ticketing immediately if you didn't want to. I know often, building parks don't have printers in their vehicles, that's for sure. What they would do is, they can enter something in, they would come back to the office, print it, and allow, in fact, a lot of times, I'm not even posting violations on the local potential, because if they're dealing with vacant properties, they don't even know, so that's, this home ordinance, the owner's, is now a vacant property. But again, you would definitely have to defend the printers and vehicles all the way.
And just my last question, now, tickets that are moving violation, would you guys read that part, or does that go straight to our, you know, that goes straight to?
That still would go through whoever you're using for those right now. And the only part that we have to have some conversation on would be the leads interface, so we have a leads interface, but that can be a rub of the state, but if you have a RMS CAD system, we're running that leads query, and these prints are temporary on our drive, we can just parse that data out, because we're already C just applying. So, the way the state classifies that is that once the municipality runs a query that's on the laptop, it's actually your data, but you're not, you're not breaking any rules to those, we're already certified, we're FBI background check, C just applying, so we do that to the data directly from the state, but if you're already running it from your CAD system, or your RMS system, it's on the hard drive, it's just sitting on the bullet. We can parse that data out directly to our system, so you just, you enter a plate, and a field in our system, and you hit leads query, it knows to go grab that data, and operate the order, the vehicle information, so your officers will ordinance, sole servicer is now a vacant property. But again, you definitely have to have the printers and vehicles all good.
And just my last question, now, now, tidies that are moving violation, would you guys read that part, or does that go straight to our, you know, that goes straight to?
That still would go through whoever you're using for those right now. Uh, and the only part that we have to have some conversation on would be the leads interface. So we have a lead surface, but that can be a regular state. But if you have a RMS or CAT system, we're running that lead query. And these queries are temporary on our drive, we can just parse that data out, because we're already C just applying. So, um, the, the way the state, um, classifies that is that once the municipality runs query that's on the laptop, it's actually your data, but you're not, you're not breaking any rules to those, we're already certified, we're FBI, um, background check, procedures compliant, so we do that to the data directly from the state. But if you're already going in from your CAD system or your RMS system that's on the hard drive, it's, it's just sitting on the bullet. And we can parse that data out directly to our system. So you just, you enter a plate and a field in our system, and you hit lead query, it knows to go grab that data and operate the owner, the vehicle information, so your officers will, you have to put the offense, the location, and say.
So if a person decides that they don't want to go to the courthouse, they can pay through here?
Absolutely. Absolutely. But in fact, what happens is you, the system is set up so that there are a certain number of days for somebody to pay. So if somebody wants to pay their ticket, they can. If they don't, and that, that number of days passes, that's when the system is triggered to say, now the notices are ready to print, and also just say, maybe, I guess, maybe you can say, print all the notices for the next five years, print them, sell them, et cetera.
I just wanted, because the last thing you stated was collection. I mean, I'm just, I'm just interested to see what is it that you can implement now when people pay.
Well, yes, I'd love to be able to tell you, but more things, the government is working against us, of course, if they're going to make credit recording, you can no longer suspend for ten more parking tickets. Uh, you don't have red light violations, it's all those there. They stop taking the red light violations from the IFC. So, uh, there's a lot of the things working against municipalities instead of working for municipalities. But, um, so no, there is no real magic wand on there, implement the ability for people to be able to pay out lineings and the credit card, that might be more convenient for them. Um, you also have payment plans within the system. So if for some reason you had a two hundred dollar ticket, and someone said, oh, I can't really pay that, well, we can set up a payment plan, maybe.
Is that something online, is that, are they talking to a person, or is that just explaining to them if they try to pull that up online?
That would be something that you would need to explain to somebody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not something, uh, oh, I shouldn't say that, I mean, we never, who does it afford them, does it afford them, they end up giving some logic in there for people to set up payment plans. Uh, the same thing with collections, collections where you do payment plans, although they don't have any artificial recoveries to set that up, although we are implementing something right now, so that people can actually build their own payment plans. We will establish guidelines to make that happen, so it's not going to be, where it's going to go off for months and months and months.
And how long is your prices in effect, other words, comments, these time do we have to make the decision whether, are these prices, how long are these prices?
Uh, do, do these prices advise for you for the next four to six months?
So I see that you mentioned, uh, training here, uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, how much training is that? How many hours, or is that?
Basically, what you do is we go back and we're doing what it's always been done, how much our typical, a lot of times. So normally what that's going to do is it'll be ten hours before each one is a hour, but it's, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, I think, if you do that, it takes you ten hours or maybe fifteen, you just want to be up on six hundred dollars.
So in total, the twenty-four hundred dollars, you know, one time payment, and then ten fifty a month, a thousand capital.
Yes.
And for three year bridge?
Yes.
And that's, that's it?
It'll be going after that, you know, if he, if he doesn't stop, because it's not worth the service, but we require them on a thirty-six month agreement, our agreement to be able to accept will automatically step in one year at a time unless you run the ordinance decides to cancel, or we do an initial term at least thirty-six months.
All right.
What is the penalty for a urgent draw?
Can't hear you.
We don't have.
Hold on, I have to turn it off. What is the, you don't have a penalty if you cancel within the?
You don't have, you don't have an option to be able to say, I don't know, cancel sometime during the course of thirty-six months.
So you're just in it for thirty-six months?
Yeah, the only, I'm sorry, the only way around that is if you set a whole payment front.
Oh.
You know, that if you sign the one, you can keep off, because we don't, can be really big, I don't know, we're not saying we're really big on that much of a thing.
Both are good. Now, I need to, we'll divide off between homeowner and renters. You know, for, because we have, you know, a hundred homes here in town.
Yeah.
And they have a hundred renters. You know, so, so renters, like, the people who own a home will be held accountable for directed mishaps.
Uh, so are you talking about building code violation?
Well, building code, that's, I understand, that, that'll live on. But, you know, like, uh, you know, your whole lot for water payments, water payments or, um, parking violations or whatever, that, you know, like, as I said, punching the dresser, obviously it's fine. That's not going to be helping us to own, that'll be helping us to person.
The, 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 that's subject related violation, that's who that person is. So same thing goes for the architect.
Right.
Architect in addition to able to actually address the law, so it's S patent, that's what it's.
You have, you have a person?
Yes, I have a person.
My ears, I gotta get to the mic.
But I'll speak loud. Do you hear?
No.
Can you hear yourself? It's, it's green. Okay, uh, for property services, for those vacant properties, can we identify those, you know, the historical, uh, what's been happening on, in the, uh, on the property historically, you know, like, if it's been vacant and what, and what bank owns the property, can we have that kind of information added to the module?
Yeah, so, um, that is typically now, with the ticketing laws, when it's going in for a property database.
Right.
Because the property related tickets are going to go against that. Within that property database, there are, uh, you can keep track of owners, you can keep track of tenants, past tenants. If, if, if the owner of the property, so long their damn account, it's now, um, with trust bank, you would just change that and put that as your current owner record. You can also keep track of, is there a rental property? Is the property vacant? If it was a rental property and lent it, it become a rental property. If you went to inspection, I mean, if you get into this particular part of the property mix inside, which is not the pricing, the pricing you gave for the ticketing, but there is pricing here for that, you decide to extend that. Yeah, there, there's a, a ton more information available to you from property perspective.
So you're saying there's additional cost for the property maintenance?
For, for the, for these modules, there is additional cost, and that's the ability to contract and license. So what I said, the property mix inside, it, we have a complete property database anyway because of the building code ticketing.
Okay.
Right, that's going to be a default, that's going to be your foundation. But in order to do these other pieces, keep track of, and you're going to have owners and tenants that potentially, you know, want advanced properties. But you'll have owners and tenants in the property database already, because that's just a piece of the, the building code part. But in order to do contractors licenses, track their insurance and bond, issue track permits, enter service requests, manage and schedule inspections, and issue business licenses, yes, there's additional dollars that's in that hole. That's, that's, and there's more training involved in that, and that's, that's really expanding the functionality of it.
How, and, what, how much would a business license be?
Business license?
Yeah, a business license.
Uh, the business license is actually included in all that part, we don't really break it out. So the way I have it, uh, if you're interested in knowing the pricing of that, that piece is thirteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. And basically the same thing applies, although we, what we had listed here, if the builders decide, so a toll for, I don't think, is twenty-four hundred dollars a month. If the builders decided to go forward, we'd suddenly provide a five hundred dollar discount per month, so six thousand dollar discount, it would be eighty hundred dollars a month, and you would get the ticket price and that everything. Yeah. So that would be entering the data, or you guys get the data? The, the data would be imported at, at the very beginning, from a property perspective, and there, there might be some other parts, like maybe your offenses. What we want to get is either from the county, or from a waterway system, a file that, you know, matches our format, and you can get that, and you can push that property database in. We don't want you to build a property database, that's a lot of work. So once we get the property database in, and maybe from the county or township, it'll have, hopefully, as best as we have as current owners, that's your big starting point, yeah. You have that, that data will be imported to start with.
You have a question?
Um, I'm looking at your pricing module, and you said it would be nineteen hundred dollars a month for all of it. But then I'm looking up here for that core three sixty, the training hours would be sixty-four to eighty hours, and that's eight thousand to ten thousand dollars.
Yes, that's correct. It's the twenty-five hundred for the ticketing, and then it's, it's the actual pricing for, uh, the training on all these modules, which is more expensive.
Okay, thanks.
You have a question? Now, looking over your, um, I don't see anything here that would even constitute a, anything out of contract, so I'm sure that.
I can get, I can get a copy of the contract over, or you, whoever you want me to send that to.
Okay.
But I'm sure you want me to pull it back.
Yes, that's, that's, that's going to be my next question. Okay, uh, yes, if you could get us that, and then, um, you did say twenty-four hundred, that includes everything you talked about?
No, I mean, no. Yes. Yeah, but I said it was, it was twenty-four hundred a month.
A month, includes everything, everything.
And then, and we discount that out, I have an offer, so it's actually.
Nineteen hundred dollars a month, that includes everything you talked about.
That's correct. I mean, not the training, but it's best guess, the subscription fee's nineteen hundred dollars a month.
You have a question?
Yeah, it's, you know, because the trainings are not known. We don't know how much trainings that I really take. Um, you know, there's a project manager who's going to work with whoever you designated person is, and they need to keep this project not tracked, but there's a lot of people who are going to learn the software, you know, the professor, those all works, you know, you got, there's a lot of people.
And you're, as far as, um, being able to get ahold of you guys, like, twenty-four seven, or?
No, we're, we're normal, and business hours, we're eight to five, five days a week. So, um, it's just almost four hours for a song.
Is there a cost for someone to come out if we have a problem?
Oh, yeah, uh, that, that's not a problem. You, we can, we can train you, you know, if you.
No, I mean, not train, I mean, if you have a problem with the system.
I'm sorry.
We, if we have a problem with the system, is there a cost to have a, a person to come out and do that, or is that included in that?
It, it, yes, yes, it is. If, if that were the case, in today's technology, because it's a hosted system, most likely anything that might happen would be at a server that's in our hosting facility, we would work with the hosting facility to give that track of where it, it's typically not something that happens here, uh, although if it was, if it was something we needed here, we would certainly, certainly do that. And we're, we're located in a paid sites, it's not like we're flying in from Austin, Texas.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Okay, so you're saying you work the normal hours, Monday through Friday, but there's, we got an issue on, say, Sunday. Who do you contact?
There's.
Nobody?
Nobody, you're not there.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Yes, we have, I have four. And I was looking at your, I guess this is your resume or some different, um, are these references currently you working with them, or you just, you just reference? Your customer that's on there?
Uh, these are all current customers right now.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's just a partial list.
Okay.
I was saying, is it, um, is it third person, or is that, how many?
Right. What, what are our person?
Training is twenty-four hundred?
The training is twenty-five hundred for the ticketing, that's for whoever we need to train, and then the ability to harvest all perks, I think it's seventy-five, or twenty, we got, we don't care if it's one or fifteen, in fact, we know it's going to be awful people.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
All righty, and, uh, thank you for all the, you have some, all five personal ways.
Is it possible to start with the administrative adjudication, and then add a court property mixture later? Do we have to make a decision at the beginning to do both?
If, if we did both at the same time, we basically model the pricing, have to say I could do something, but I don't find it viable a month, if you said, we'll have to do it over here.
Do you have a question? Okay, so thank you, Mr. Nagal, we will be in touch with you.
All right.
Thank you. Um, the next person, uh, Mr. Holden, do you need the microphone?
It's standing here okay, or do you want?
No, no, you come up, be comfortable, you, you may be a little bit more comfortable sitting here.
Can you hear?
We cut this.
I mean, I'm always listening.
Yes, if there's something to ask, we cut this, hold that, and then, um.
And they use it too.
Great, thanks, now, um.
Hey, uh.
Again, may I take off my?
Yes. All right, and you're here to talk to us about public buildings in distress communities?
Yes.
Please use the microphone.
They're going to, that's going to happen all night. I would just say it on hold.
Please.
Pull it straight up. There you go.
Is this better? That's about as better. Good evening, I'm Ken Holden, I'm with Green Home Experts, we're a third party, and I've been asked by COMED to come out to talk to communities that are in distressed communities, such as Sawt Village.
Well, I was just going to say, please, just for my application, describe what distressed means. What, what do you, what do you consider distressed, that's what.
I don't have a definition for that, but COMED does, and I'm going off of their instructions for me to go out. They've given me a list of communities to talk to, and Sawt Village is on that list.
Okay, I just, just, rather, get that definition, because my, my definition is what COMED has made me do different things, because I've studied this to be private community, not distressed, but okay.
I, and I would probably agree with you, this is a beautiful community. But you are on the list.
Yes, yes.
And Sawt Village is eligible for free LED lights. And the reason that they're doing this is so they, Sawt Village can receive seventy-five percent less cost of energy. The LED bulbs traditionally last a lot longer, so you have less maintenance costs by taking the old bulbs out, putting the new bulbs in, and they usually last between five and seven years.
Yes. We are.
So the buildings that I have down that would qualify in Sawt Village would be the village hall, the police and fire stations, the community center, the library, the three schools, and one sixty-eight school district building. Okay. And what would, needs to be done, on page three, there is an application. This has got to be filled out for each building that Sawt Village would like to have COMED evaluate. And the hardest part on here is the COMED account number. So that may take a couple minutes to use the bill and put that on there. All right? So once the application is filled out and I receive it, I work with COMED, and they'll come out and do a, um, onsite tour, or they'll do a virtual tour. And what they would do, if we just look up, they would come in here and they would say, okay, there is eight light fixtures in the middle, each one of these has a bulb, thirty-two bulbs, and they would mark that down. And then they would go. and they'll come out and do a, um, onsite tour or they'll do a virtual tour. And what they would do, if we just look up, they would come in here and they would say, okay, there is eight light fixtures in the middle. Each one of these has a bulb, thirty-two bulbs, and they would mark that down. And then they would go back and they would put together a program saying, "Sawt Village, you have, if, if you go with this light program, you can save X amount of dollars, you can save X amount of money off of your electric bill on monthly basis. Do you like this? Do you want this? You agree to that, you sign off on it. They will order the light bulbs, they'll deliver to you and then Sawt Village has thirty days in which to install them." Uh, I'm working with several other communities and they told me that they could not do all of their buildings within the thirty days. And so what they, what we would do is stagger the buildings out. So, let's say the village hall would get it one month, the police and fire station another month, so that your maintenance people can install those bulbs. Installation is up to you, whether you have internal people or if you want to go to a third party to install those. Um, then, once they're installed, you notify me and then we would come out and do either a physical inspection or a virtual inspection and take a look at the bulbs and say, yes, you installed them and at that point, they're all free.
Okay, they're free after you did the inspection. Is there a cost before we get a refund or we just get the book?
You are not charged until we sign off on it. So, once we deliver, you have thirty days to install them. On that second inspection, if you installed them, there is no cost to you and there was no cost to you upfront anyway. But if you did not install them, then we would charge you for those bulbs.
Now, would these include both inside our building or not outside of the building?
They would include inside as well as outside. Typically, they're the four-foot, eight-foot bulbs, fluorescent, that COMED is, uh, wanted to change over so they can show the greatest amount of savings both to you as well as to COMED people.
Because, uh, okay, because we would have to definitely work out a schedule with our, uh, current team that would do that and they would have to, you know, especially in this building, it'd take a while.
I understand that.
You know, so, uh, we give it a different month, but you're saying that we can also ask for an inspection?
Yes. We would work with you, just, you know, working in good faith.
Now, the other building that you talked about, other different taxing bodies, that would be their own contract, correct? The other building, McConaughey Library, uh, Grand Fair, Strong Pur, and so forth, school district wants to see, that's a different taxing body than this one, so they would, would they would be doing their own agreement or...
What this contract is for is all public buildings regardless of who the taxing body...
So what happens if one of the public buildings is not able to do theirs? They will be charged or the building will be charged?
Uh, the building would be charged or whoever signed that contract would be responsible for that.
So that's what I'm saying, they're all just separate and then they would have to sign their own contracts?
Absolutely.
Yes. Offside, trustee Grant?
So, to clarify, for example, these eight lights will qualify, right?
Correct.
But what about each individual bulb that's, you know, we have all around, the individual bulbs, that's at least a hundred bulbs, right? Do all the bulbs qualify?
That would be determined by COMED and their engineering people.
And then, so you also mentioned outside as well, so does that mean outside attached to the building? Because we have lights in our parking lot that's on public grounds, public building, so does that count as well? Or is it a lights for the building, for example, a spotlight or like a side light on the side door or something?
It would be all of the lights inside and outside attached to the, the grounds itself.
That's it.
So, for you, uh...
I think it's a great program, but what I'm looking at is, it says these LEDs lights last about five to seven years. What happens when they burn out? What would be the cost to replace them? Or is COMED going to give us more free bulbs?
I can't tell you that, my crystal ball's not that clear, but at this point, it would be your responsibility. It'd just be getting you going and get you to change over to LED.
Right, and I think what we need to look at is what's the cost of the LEDs, because they're not cheap. So that would, that's why I'm asking.
Do you want the savings in to the old bulb, the new bulb?
Comparatively, um, if we looked around at other communities that have done this, they're showing the savings of about five hundred dollars a year to make that change over in just savings for the bulbs themselves or the electricity themselves. And currently, so many people are changing over to LED, there has been a drastic reduction in, in cost for those. Now, the company that I work for is Green Home Experts. What we do is, uh, when we're selling the bulbs, COMED adds rebates on those. When we sell them, we take that off and we charge COMED for them. Uh, as an example, Zion was getting a quote for their outside LED lights and they were coming up with three hundred dollars a bulb. We got that cost down to forty dollars a bulb after the rebates, because COMED had so much incentives on those. Programs that other communities have taken advantage of on this is the Baywood Fire, Calumet City, the Bolton Park District, Ford Heights, uh, Joliet Police and Fire, Dixmore, Zion and Burnham Fire Department. So many communities around here.
All right, uh, is there a deadline for this, um, application process?
Yes, uh, that is the end of twenty-one. December twenty-one.
Okay, end of next year.
Correct. Currently, COMED has run out of funds up to the third quarter. They've started the fourth quarter, which is October one. Uh, on that list, we have, I think, over two hundred people on the list. If you fill out the application and send it to me, we do the site inspection, we do everything that we need to do and then when COMED comes to you on the list, that's when you would be able to get those bulbs. So, wherever you are on that list. So, if you were to do that tonight, let's say you're two hundred on the list, you may get the bulbs December, January, February. I don't know, it would just be up to COMED as they work through their budget.
And I'm looking here, um, we have other items too, um, are they offered also at that separate HVAC?
The HVAC is something that I don't deal with, that would be something that you would, uh, deal directly with COMED. I just deal with the bulb side.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee William.
Thank you. Uh, first thing is, I would feel very uncomfortable in even discussing anything that's gonna happen at the library or the school district. I think that that's something they should have a separate presentation at the school board meeting in the library or...
Yes, that, that's why I asked him.
You will be, but you will be going to present at the school board and the library board.
I will do whatever I need to do for the sake...
I would like to be involved in anything that they do.
Understand.
And second of all, we went to LED lighting on, on the outside for our streetlights and a lot of people are saying that it's too dim. Um, so I'm kind of concerned, I know LED is the way that we're going with the energy, but our LED light, lighting outside in a lot of areas, uh, they're saying it's not bright enough. Would we be able to see what type of lighting they're gonna be offering?
I don't have any examples of that, but I do know there's different light tones. Some are very, um, red and some are a lot dimmer than you have daylight. So I don't know what selection that, uh, the streetlights went, but we do have a variety of different ones. There's not just one, like the old Impendent bulb where there was just one choice, but many choices.
Mr. Mayor, can, can we ask, before, before we go into further, because that was a good question, I'm hoping it was yours, it's here, Kevin. Are there any lights in here right now that are LED?
Um, do you have some smaller lights on the outside of the building right now seem like? These are all, that's about the question, uh, do you have T5s in here right now? Is there any issues with the P8, P12, any issues with ballasts that would go over?
We would have to have, uh, the site engineer make that determination for that.
And the question would be, is that we have an eight-year-old ballast in there, are we gonna have issues with the new light bulb going failing quicker?
Again, that would be determined by the COMED engineer to determine what ballast with what bulbs. When they do their inspection, they would be looking at the bulbs, they would be looking at the ballasts.
Do you have ballast replacement included with that?
Uh, we do not.
Do you know if COMED has that? I did see something on their sites for the incentive program with the HVAC. It also had ballasts in there at one time with lighting kits?
Uh, I can't speak to that, I don't, I'm not sure.
Um, compact fluorescents, are we just dealing with four footers or do you have compacts too?
Uh, it would be, my understanding is there would be the four foots and the eight foot. LED lights at this time. No two footers.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Grant?
Uh, question for Kevin. So, worst-case scenario, if you do have to replace every single bulb in village hall, the police or fire station or community center, is something a junior department can do in thirty days?
Uh, building by building, I don't think there would be a problem. Um, if we had to do it all at one time, for sure that would be an issue. Uh, this building probably has several hundred bulbs just in the four footers alone, because most of these fixtures have double bulbs in them, might as their stack. Um, and the question also, you did spell out some village, village buildings here, are public works buildings eligible and is our water department's buildings eligible?
I did not see those buildings and they are eligible.
They are?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
We've done that for, uh, Ford Heights. We've done all of their buildings and they were all applicable.
All right, well, then, um, we'll put that under, um, that's a great, great thing, because I, I, I mean, I know that some people were saying that LED, I've been inside places with LEDs and they seem bright. But, and being said as inside, outside, we do have some LEDs in the buildings and some of them seem to me as being bright, but, so, you know, that's my eyes. But, um, as far as this, if this would probably be, basically, you're talking about mostly inside and a few outside. So, uh, that's something that we can discuss as a board. Uh, but you said we have intel, but I'm trying to see, you know, we'll have to have one more inspection so we can go forward. And if there are any contracts that we have to sign?
Yes, that would be page three. That is the first contract that just says that we, that COMED can come out and inspect the buildings. After that, we would give you, uh, what you're eligible for, that would be free. The public buildings, the application, page three.
Okay, okay, the application, that's the contract you're talking about?
That, all that does is just allows us to come out and inspect the buildings.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or yet?
If we fill out this contract and we find out all this over here, how we, uh, how life or any money if we decide not to go to program?
You are not.
Any other questions? All right, sir, I really appreciate you coming to let us know until we get any back with you very soon, because it's something that will save money and also our bright day coming.
I would say thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next item of discussion is, um, financial update for forensic audit twenty eighteen nineteen and open financial records, uh, trustee William.
Mr. Mayor, I... I may be able to answer for some updates. I know trustee Williams had asked for it to be on there so we could give her the updates on the audit. And we have things in the bag, but I talked to Michelle, I talked to Sickich and I talked to, uh, Miller Cooper for some, for the updates. Uh, Sickich, uh, is doing the forensic audit, are very happy with the way we're progressing. Uh, we're missing a couple of items and they think that they'll be done ready to move on with their audit. Uh, there's two small issue of one, with some vehicles that they need some purchase and some other bank statements. Uh, Miller Cooper, um, we've told them that they're about six weeks out before they'll have everything they need and then they can serve their audit. So both are moving forward, both are progressing very well and they're getting the information they need to the auditors and they'll be moving forward. And it came from the finance director.
On October the sixth, we had Sickich on the agenda to come to give an update and they were not able to make it. Will we be, um, be inviting them back?
I'm not sure who invited Sickich to come out. Uh, he didn't know he was on the agenda. So I'm not sure who invited him to come out.
Mr. Fitch did.
I'm not sure, but if you want Mr. Sickich to come out, Mr., uh, not Mr. Sickich, uh, Jim, uh, Jim from Sickich. If you want him to come out, yes, you will be glad to come out, but at this point, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's the, not the board one, is the update from finance.
Trustee William? Yes, I'm with you, but you have to wait for...
Yes, I know I asked for financial updates on the last agenda and the only thing I saw on the agenda was Sickich. So I didn't know what happened at that point, why that was always on there. So, but what I would like to see for the next, at board meetings, moving forward, is get a financial update over two weeks. Where are we with our audits and, and as trustee Grant was saying, we need to start evaluating where we are in our budgets more often than what we've been doing. So that's what I would like to see. Um, and the other question is, I just don't understand why we can't provide bank statements. You would think that that's something that's either in a file cabinet, out of the computer, or easily technical from the bank. So, if that's something that's holding up your odds, I just don't understand why.
On a good note, they have almost everything they need and they're moving forward and, and that's positive.
Uh, Mr. Fitch, yes, uh...
I, I had asked for Sickich to be on the agenda probably about a month ago.
Now you know how I feel.
I've asked for Sickich to be on the agenda probably about, um, a month ago because the body wanted to, residents want to know what was going on with it. However, for whatever reason, when I tried to get him on the agenda, it was pushed off the agenda. The last agenda, I never got a phone number to have them call in. Um, unfortunately, Sickich gets called a lot by members of the body to find out what's going on with it. So it's almost be the same drum over and over when part of the body has the information, part of the body does not have the information. So the idea was to have Sickich speak for themselves, because I know there was an issue, concerns that our person could have stopped the audit or whatnot. With regards to the bank statement, I don't know how many times I have to explain, I wish you all could actually spend a day with the finance department. There's a ton of work. The two thousand seventeen bank statements are all stapled together. It takes individuals time to go through thirty bank statements and make copies. After this week, we have reached out to three other banks and asked them for bank statements. First, National Bank, I can forward an email, said it would take them two weeks to get us copies. So think about that, if it takes the bank two weeks to get copies of their own material, how long is it gonna take us to get copies of our material that we made from their bank? So, it is a patient thing. I've said it when I first started the audit, it is not gonna be done in two or three months. So, I know there's a big rush, I don't understand why there's a big rush, but there's things that have to be done. Unfortunately, the new finance director, because I'm about to wing my way out of here, is trying to grasp every single thing in the finance department. And I said it last year, it is a monster, it's a big elephant. And I don't think no one understands the magnitude of what it takes to run that finance department, whether she's dealing with residents and water bill to try to get water cut off, which brings in revenue, whether she's dealing with, um, invoices that's coming in that have outrageous charges that she's analyzing, it's a lot. Now, if you guys would like her to exclusively, every... Now, if you guys would like her to exclusively, every day, focus on strictly the audit, that's fine. But then, if you can, don't ask why other things fall behind. Because it's more than a notion to just run the finance department. It's just not like getting in a police car and you drive to the scene and you do what you gotta do and it's over. It's, it's an ongoing process. So as long as Sickich and Miller Cooper feeling like we're moving forward, I think that should be suffice. That's why I wanted them to speak. So that they could ask any question about any delays or anything that may be happening to move forward. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Trustee Williams. I really do appreciate that explanation because I think that's the first time I heard it quite that way. But now it makes sense, okay? So there's statements in-house that are all stapled together and it's an issue with, with getting them over. And I know that more than one trustee has stated, we are available to help if needed, okay? I'd be more than happy to help the finance department do whatever they need to do. And I know more than one trustee has made that same offer. Because, and we're here, and I would show myself and, and, and offer directly to her that whatever we can do to help. I didn't know that they were actually gonna have a statement together and that that was an issue. But since that's an issue, then we'll see what we can do to give her some help. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, next item is MFT funds for infrastructure repairs, but the group? Now, Michael Finch feels like he was wanting to. Is that what it was?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to have a discussion on the allocation from the MFT funds. We talked to the finance director and also Mr. Finch and also I called the state. And as I understand, we have a hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be, that can come from, allotted from the MFT funds that can be used for restorations of the fire hydrant once they are installed and moved forward. So, uh, the emphasis that I wanna put on this hundred thousand dollars that we're, uh, can use for the restoration is that this project cannot be done until, well, the fire hydrants are finished and most likely not until March or April when the weather change. But I would like to have this, uh, money set aside because you know, as we know, we, you know, see some money there and it's not there, uh, in a long time. But, uh, we have a hundred thousand dollars that we can use for MFT funds for restoration and this money should be kept in a separate line items and being restricted. So we could use it just specifically for, uh, fire hydrants, uh, restoration of fire hydrants as they come in and we do them. So I'd like to open up a discussion for that.
When you say you want to open a discussion, what do you mean?
Well, I just, I just told you why we, uh, we've got a hundred thousand dollars and, uh, to use for restoration and we would like to, uh, use it just for that particular purpose.
Well, you say you want to open a discussion. What kind of discussion are you talking about?
Any, any trustees have any, uh...
You said you wanted to set aside this amount of money.
Any, well, yeah, if the trustees want to talk about that and I think options that require we talk about this particular item. And if they have anything to say about it, you know, I'd like to hear.
I have a question. So, you said we have a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, from the MFT funds.
Okay. Um, well, we give MFT money every month, so...
Yeah.
This hundred thousand dollars, did it just, did we just get it just because? Like, what did we get it for?
What did we give it for?
Yeah, I mean, did it just come for, like, is it, is it just a hundred thousand dollars that we got because the state was giving us extra money? Is it just a hundred thousand dollars we got because it's gonna be used for something specific? I don't, I mean, where did the hundred thousand dollars come from?
The hundred thousand dollars came from the MFT fund. If you look on your last cash balance, I think it's, uh, we have like five hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars or something. So we, uh, after, uh, discussions with the finance director and Mr. Finch, uh, we, he told us that we could use the hundred thousand dollars for, uh, infrastructure.
So these infrastructure, you want to use specifically for fire hydrants?
Right. I, what I want to use the hundred thousand dollars for is restoration of the fire hydrant. As you know, when you get these fire hydrants in, they always leave a gaping hole in the, you know, wherever you put them and it looks bad. So instead of just leaving those holes open all through the buildings and stuff, you could use that money to fill in those, uh, you know, fire hydrants in the areas.
So you want to put some dirt around the fire hydrant?
Well, yeah, well, basically, yeah, you know, uh, rap or whatever is needed. So it won't look so bad. Talking cosmetics.
So, I'm just, I'm...
Now, before I ask, I think you made me confused. Are you, are you referencing a hundred, I think a thirty or forty thousand dollars from the CN fund?
I said MFT funds, a hundred thousand dollars from the MFT fund.
I thought, I thought it was the money from the CN fund, uh...
That has nothing to do with...
To be allocated to the, for the, uh, fire.
That, that has nothing to do with it.
So I guess I just want to finish my comments. So also, you mentioned you want to put it aside. Well, MFT fund is already reserved, like, you know, it's, well, restricted rather than you can't just go in there and grab something out. It's set up like that already. But also, can we use MFT funds for infrastructure repairs? Because I know that the purpose of the MFT funds is to kinda, um, I know we use it every year, probably boys that kinda use a portion of it to kinda do the streets or whatever the case may be. But can we use that for fire hydrants specifically? I think so. At least, I didn't think so.
I, I, that's what I was, that's what I was asking. That's why I asked the question. Because you, MFT funds, they're used for road repair issues to the motor fuel tanks. Now, you're gonna use it for fire hydrants, I'm not sure. I don't know. I'm not, you know, one to answer that one. That's why I thought the CN fund was actually used for that. And it was that was the thing because we asked, they went and asked, uh, CN, could we use that money that was set in there that was left over? Could we use that? And they said, yes, we can use for fire hydrant.
Mr. Mayor, let me...
I'm not sure if we can, uh, before we use it, I'm gonna make sure that we, I will.
Mr. Mayor, let me clarify that the CN... Okay, I'm sorry. The CN fund is an entirely different pot of money. Uh, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars from the MFT fund that, uh, we talked, the finance director and also the village administrator and Mr. Finch, and said these funds are available for, uh, restoration. So, and also I called the state and we can use those funds for restoration, restoration. Now, the, uh, hundred thousand dollars, as I keep saying, is an entirely different fund, MFT funds. We have a balance of like five hundred fifty thousand dollars in there already and we're gonna use it. And you know, every month, we get twenty or thirty thousand every month. So the money is gonna be adding up. So when, when March or April comes around and it's time to do those and we finish those fire hydrants and stuff, the money will be there to do the restoration of the fire hydrant. We just don't want to leave those fire hydrants out there. And they, and, and they still look like they're in the building. You can see right now, they do a lot of fire hydrant work and they haven't been able to, uh, finish up the work around the fire hydrant. So what we, what I propose is that you take the hundred thousand dollars, set it aside for restorations once we put these fire hydrants in.
And I guess one more thing I was gonna add. Have you talked with Kevin or with Jim to see is that money? Because I know they allocate a certain portion every year, MFT funds for certain expenses. They might have had plans for that money. I don't know if Kevin wants to speak on that or not.
Yeah. I hope, well, I'm gonna tell you what I know and then Kevin can speak on it. Now, I talked to Kevin. He's also included in the discussions. And we have that money available and, uh, we talked to Mr. Finch and the finance director, like I said, and also the village administrator. So the money is there and the money that we're gonna get each month will add up. And then with March and April, when it's time to do these restorations, the money will be there to, uh, uh, take care of it.
Sorry, I forgot to ask Kevin. I'm sorry, I'm losing it. Asking us Kevin, like, in your opinion, do you think we should use a hundred thousand dollars to put here around a fire hydrant? I just, you know, I think that might give you something way more efficient and better, but I wanted to hear from you.
Well, MFT fund is a restricted fund. That's specific reasons you can use the money within there. Most of our, most of our funding, we prepare the year before. Our daily funding roughly is a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is maintenance, street repairs, signage, pottle, patching, miscellaneous stuff of that nature. The other money is put aside usually for street projects that we prepare the year before. We also wait for the CBT program and hopefully get both of those programs together to do street work. Again, asking the engineers exactly on what you can allocate that money for, restorations, questionable about fire hydrants. They would have to have specifics on that. And I would prefer to ask the engineers to clarify that at this point before we go any further.
I know earlier, um, in the last several, several months, you've talked about the hundred thousand dollars for, to do fire hydrants. Okay, so I take it that's in the budget. So this is something entirely different that you're talking about, the MFT?
Yes, the hundred thousand dollars is taken from the water fund that's for the fire hydrants. And we have a hundred forty-four thousand that's actually coming from the CN fund. And then we're talking about the hundred thousand dollars now for the restoration. And I did talk to Jim Robinson about this and, uh, they're okay with it. So we have, like, in fact, we got three hundred forty-four thousand dollars that we actually could do something for residents. A hundred thousand for fire hydrants, a hundred forty-four from the CN, and I think you call it infrastructure or something. And then we have a hundred thousand dollars MFT funds that we're talking about today. That's three hundred forty-four thousand dollars.
Well, I know with the CN fund, we know that that is gonna be used for public safety. So whatever, if you want to repair sidewalks, if you want, for public safety. But with this MFT, and it's being a restrictive fund, I think we really need to clarify what we can use it for. And not just go ahead and use it. You're saying, they're saying restoration. I think we really need to clarify if we can really use that hundred thousand dollars.
Well, if you want clarity on it, I'll get Robinson Engineering, the village administrator, the finance director, and Mr. Finch. All the writing and something, send the money to use for a hundred thousand dollars just to make everybody comfortable. But the money's there and we could be, and it probably won't be used until March or April next year. But we like to put it aside so that the money won't just, let's say, our, our funds are just used up. And we don't want to use that. We're gonna take, make sure the money is there when we get ready to do the, uh, fire hydrants and the restoration.
I think, um, with what Trustee Brewer said regarding to the MFT fund, it is restricted. It is, um, for certain eligible expenses. And even, um, there's a point in time that you give a, a expense report to IDA to let you know, to let them know what you're planning on spending for the MFT funds, especially in doing the audit. But what I think is more important is, we're talking about numbers, but we don't want to have a plan on how we're gonna spend it. So even if the hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna get out the water fund, the MFT, in theory, we need like a third phase of it. So even if it does get approved, it won't happen until the hundred thousand dollars from the water fund is spent, the hundred-something dollars from CN, the variable fund is spent, and then you get to the third phase, which is a hundred thousand dollars or so from the MFT fund. So what I've suggested is, we do a project management of what we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on. Instead of being so vague and just say fire hydrant. I know we're gonna be talking about that in a few minutes. And then, so that takes care of one bucket of hundred thousand. What we're gonna spend a hundred forty-two thousand dollars on in the CN fund, instead of being so vague and just say, um, safety, what, what does that really mean? And then you can, if we start doing that, we might not even get to the point where we need the hundred thousand dollars, um, out of MFT fund if it's eligible. Because the reality, we'd be back into a whole new fiscal year, which we, we might have different kind of grant monies or whatever else might be eligible. So I, I'm in agreement with Trustee Brewer. If we use the MFT funds, that money, if it's eligible. But before we get to that phase three, we gotta start with phase one and two. And that's what I think we should do first. Just put together a plan of action and then ask, because once the fire hydrants get fixed, they may trust you go ahead and do the landscaping as they've prepared. If not, then that's a conversation you and Mr. Willis can have was to make it look nice once one is fixed and use the same bucket of money from the hundred thousand or the, from a hundred thousand to water fund or a hundred forty-two thousand in the CN real fund. Real fund and then we're about the MFT fund later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was on minutes today and for October the sixth. And on October the sixth, we kept throwing around the amount of monies that's being provided by CN. And now tonight, and I thought I had my head wrapped around it. Now, tonight, I hear one person say that the CN funds were at one hundred and forty-four thousand and then another a hundred and forty-two. And so if someone could just clarify for me for certain, is it one forty-four or one forty-two?
I, I don't know exactly, but it's on the, uh, cash report that I provided last Tuesday. But it's, it's a hundred forty-something. So I don't know exactly. So I can find out tomorrow.
I just need, I mean, I don't like for the minutes to reflect the actual...
But the whole hundred forty-two is not allocated for fire hydrants.
Correct. From my understanding, one forty-two is really for trees more so than anything and maybe for fire hydrants. So that's a, I think that for history's sake, we need to be concise and consistent. And I think if you have a plan that you're talking about, it will be readily laid out there so that then we're using consistent language.
Hey, I guess we're gonna go into five. The next one, um, Trustee Grant and... Well, this one, I was just asking if they have the money for the side?
No. You know what I'll do, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, we'll write up, uh, a plan, step one, two, and three, and we'll come up with the exact figures because this is roundabout whenever somebody talks about finance. And then we'll know what steps to be taking and, uh, you know, how much money we're gonna spend. And then we could, uh, go with it from there.
Alright, so you're gonna have, I guess, step by step. And are you gonna include all, all three monies or...
The three pots of money, yes. Yeah. So, you know, everybody would be on the same page.
Well, it happens. If anything like that, you're gonna have, you're gonna get bids anyway, so. I mean, because if the bids are more, then you may not do all three. You may only bid two.
Well, possibly. Yeah, because we can only address what we actually got in the budget, you know, or whatever.
Alright. Thank you. Next one is, uh... This is for, and I think there's some capital here and then Trustee Grant's top items. I guess this is the, is this the proposal that we're talking about?
No, sir. This is the second phase of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a lot of, I sent an email out last week because of a lot of, a lot of conversations, a lot of calls in regards to the fire hydrants. And we talked with Trustee Brewer about going out for bid on the fire hydrants. And that's moving forward on that. We should have that bid going out next week, uh, once we're okay from Robinson Engineering. But talking about our public works over here, trying to come up with a different idea of what we can move forward. I discussed with them our public works that... I discussed with them our public works and employees. Hopefully, we want them to work overtime, trying to get additional fire hydrants done. So it'll be a two-phase program. One would be the private contractor that we could have go out with those three plots of money. And this would be additional money spent to get additional fire hydrants done. Talking to the mayor and the public, talking to their, in regards to the north side of town and the south side of town, whether they have a better handle on certain hydrants compared to where other hydrants are at. So what we, this, what we discussed, what I wanted to bring in front of you, was the possibility of spending additional water money in regards to getting some additional hydrants done in conjunction with going out for the bid with the private company doing other fire hydrants. So talking to our public works director, looking at about a salaries for a overtime employees, we need four employees per fire hydrant. That was the total I was told. Working on a Saturday, our guys make an average of about thirty dollars an hour, some a little higher, some a little lower. So I went to forty-five dollars multiplied by eight multiplied by four members. That came to about fifteen hundred dollars a Saturday. And then we have to add the equipment. That means the hydrants, the pipes, the valves. Because if we go down to change a hydrant, and we talk about this annoying, I'm sorry to repeat it, is once we open up that ground, it makes a lot more sense for this village to change the valves in the, in the hydrant. If they, most of them are broken anyway, but while we're down there and it's open, to change the valves. So depending on where the valve is at, where we have to open up the ground, this makes a lot more sense for us to do that work while it's open and a lot of working in the hydrant. So those costs, well, it came to about twenty-five to three thousand dollars per hy- I'm sorry, per Saturday. We can only get one hydrant done per Saturday. So fifteen hundred dollars for salaries, thousand dollars for equipment. It came to twenty-five hundred, I just went between twenty-five hundred and three thousand. That's what I did per hydrant. If we did an additional ten hydrants, it would cost us thirty thousand dollars. So, I'm sorry, if you work ten Saturdays, that would give us an additional thirty thousand dollars. Talking to the public works director, trying to get guys working, trying to get guys working on Saturday, trying to get guys to a different program for naturalize. It's not going to be a simple task, but they're willing to do some of that work. They have just something that we need to come up with. To get more boots on the ground, to get fire hydrants fixed. I know it's important to the board, I know it's important to the residents. And this is just a concept that we came with. Trusty, Trent had come up with a different proposal that he submitted on the eighteenth of September to me. And I forwarded it on to the union, where he asked, this suggestion was having two people work on the hydrants and hire two additional people outside at a lower cost. And I haven't got word back from the union yet on that, I guess we're in writing. But, but I've gotten that, and they weren't, they were mostly energetic a lot. But I'm ready for an answer back, you're right. So I had our public works director here to discuss some of the numbers, to discuss some of the hydrants, to talk about what we should be doing, or what we can do, and answering the question they had about this proposal. I understand, I, I don't know how much our fire hydrants are going to cost us in the proposal we're putting out for the private company. But I kind of know what it would cost us to have four employees work on Saturdays to get these fire hydrants done. And my job is to get these fire hydrants done.
Is this for the eight-hour day?
Yes, sir. Eight times forty, two times forty-five, fourteen forty, maybe they take a wrong. I wonder over fifteen hundred.
You understand that if the weather's in play.
There's like a lot of things going on. I understand that, my friend, that the company, so you're wagering what it is, besides the weather, besides these employees having lives of their own and having families that they need to deal with, and Thanksgiving coming up, and Christmas coming up. But it's a proposal, it's something that us, to get these hydrants fixed. I just think I, you might, it's something to be added to the proposal. I think it's important, I think it's an important issue for the village. I know it's an important issue for the board. And this is something I thought we could go to, have them work overtime and get some additional hydrants done. And they're a little level, working with the outside contractor and our guy working at the same.
And I take care of the water, that's awesome.
Right, you get the life of that, I get.
You want to explain some things about the trees too, because we talked about that too.
I have a question about the hydrants. So, so back to the hydrants. Uh, can you help me understand why four guys are needed to do a hydrant?
Well, I think the information might be a little off, but it usually takes four to five, depending on hydrant, if we're working in a concrete or a pre-dub area. We have worries about the cabins and we have worry about the hole size when we deal with it. So that's why I'm a person on a hydrant. It's more than just, we don't, we don't have the abilities to dig down to the T, take some bolts off, bolt them in. The existing system we have on the north side, which is the worst side of town for easy replacement, is we have translet water main. The water mains are pushed in points or collared points, so they're all locked in. And in order to do a replacement of a fire hydrant on the north side, you actually have to remove the existing T and you have to put a steel T in there. And then you have to use other clamping devices to attach the hydrant and the rest of the parts of the existing water main. So it's a little more involved than just digging down to the bottom of the hydrant, because of bolt off, put it in. If we had that ability, yes, we could put several in in pretty quick time.
So you're saying it could be five guys, could be. And then you can only fix one hydrant on Saturday, so four more?
That would be probably the more likely answer.
So how many do you think that you can possibly do before then the heat will get super cold outside?
Depending weather conditions or any other events, you have programs that we have to deal with, already existing programs. Towards the end of last year, we had a project set up over in Prairie on the south side of town. We had it up for four fire hydrants and four main valve replacements. And that would have took roughly, if we could stay on it for a week, we could have had a ton of heat, because they're all in close conjunction of each other. As we replace a fire hydrant, the fire hydrant has a main valve, which would be replaced automatically, it's attached to the hydrant already. And right down, further down the street, maybe another fifteen, twenty feet, which is usually on the corner, closest to the hydrant, there's a main shut-off valve, which is what we need to fix in South porch in order to fix all of it yet, whether it's pipe or more valves or hydrants. We would give the hole, prepare both of those, those steps. So we'd actually get four main valves in, plus four fire hydrants, which would already have their main new valves attached to those, so we could shut off the hydrant in an accident situation. So if we can stay on it for a solid week, we could do that all pretty quickly.
So I think, how many, how many hydrants right now do you have that are inoperable and not working?
Um, the last list we had put together, I think it was fifty-four that are inoperable. And then the rest that we have that are in condition, I would say. Our operating units have been taken off the top of them, which still is accessible, can turn and still on. It's just, it's eating off the top of the brass is what it's doing. Unfortunately, we have, we have some bangles going on, and they're seeing the top of the operating that on the hydrant. So those are easy enough to fix, but they're all operable.
So right now, is fixing hydrants a part of your weekly schedule? Because, I mean, I just don't understand the, the eight hours a day for four guys from overtime to come in to fix hydrants when I would think that's a part of, you know, daily maintenance or your daily weekly schedule?
Well, nine personnel. Um, we have a plant operator that's continuously a plant operator, he's at the plant all the time, he has magnets over there by himself. We have a customer service guy, which is, every day he gets customer service calls from the door hall that are prepaid every day or per week. So that leaves us seven people. That includes every other job we deal with. So on a regular basis, if we outdoing water operations, it's, it's impossible. So we had, years back in two thousand one, we had thirteen people. That was much easier to go out, put a crew out, continuously work out. And that's what we did, is why we only have the amount of water meters we currently have now. We've got a lot of extra pipe put in, valves put in in our bad areas of town. So that stopped a lot of water meters. We chopped it from sixty pounds to an average of sixteen here. So that saved the kind of overtime itself. And in the future, it is continuously replacing the valves, so we could do main replacements rather than clamping, and also replacing the brackets.
Um, and so, Mr. Mayor, I want to go back to the proposal that I did send to you. So, yeah, so a month ago, I shot it over to you. And my estimate was, so you, you have to add in some other costs as well to your number, to get a true number, because you know this, work overtime, you still pay, you know, all the taxes and other benefit and stuff. So you need to add that in to get a true number. But, so my proposal before, so we talked about hundred dollar dollars. So I tried to stay under a hundred dollar, you know, mark there. So I was saying with two guys, possibly working for twenty hours a week, overtime that is. And let's just say, I know it won't take thirty weeks, but, you know, let's just say, you give a thirty weeks to kind of go out there and fix hydrants. Uh, now, these two guys are probably foreigners, because those are, you know, the highest salary guys there. And then in replacement, they're working on hydrants. We can bring in two temporary workers, like we do for the summer to cut grass. We can bring in two temporary workers to kind of do the routine daily maintenance that they cannot, you know, that they, you know, fall behind on. And so the salary for the temporary workers and the pay for the two workers, the two farmers who are actually doing the fire hydrant work, you know, will still be under a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not sure like why they, you think that, well, why the union is not pleased or happy or excited about this, as you say, when we, we hire guys to cut grass. So I don't see what's the difference. They're still getting overtime per se. And so at the time I put this together, I didn't know we needed four guys or five guys to do one fire hydrant. I thought two, but I mean, again, I'm not giving the holes, I don't know. I'm glad Mr. Will should have explained that. Um, but that was based on two people, not four people. Uh, but even then, I don't think, in my opinion, it would take thirty weeks to fix, let's just say, ten to fifteen fire hydrants, right? Because if you're doing twenty hours a week of overtime, I'm, I'm not sure, was that all you can get done? But I'm sure it's going to be more than ten to fifteen. But that's just my opinion. So I, I wanted to present this to you, and I thought that you want to share this with the board, so we can kind of discuss this. But then also keep in mind that, you know, those, this hundred thousand dollars that we're trying to stay under, that I tried to stay under, you know, we can also go out and just twenty hours a week of overtime, maybe cut down some trees as well. Um, which, you know, the union, I think we still have to figure, figure that part out of the negotiations, but we could do hydrants and trees. So it's something I just want to put together, share with the board. Um, but again, I think we've already went out to bid on, I think, just the hydrants only. So I don't think we've even settled a piece about the trees yet. So I'm not sure what's going on there either. But, you know, it was both of them, I wanted to send to you and the board, so we can discuss it. Can't get any more thoughts on it. But again, it sounds like we already have a plan in place. But I don't see why we can't just, you know, keep, keep that in house, the hundred thousand dollars and get everything done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Trusty Grant, in your proposal, I've seen all Saturdays, where is the cost of the fire hydrants? Am I missing something, I think?
No, so the cost of the fire hydrants are not included, because again, like we, we can estimate, and I can't estimate the, I think it's at fifteen hundred dollars, maybe or so. Is how much? Three thousand dollars for one? I mean, but that's worst case scenario, that's like, you know, every hydrant is not that, you know, it won't be that severe a case.
We can't, we can't, your, your response, though.
Every cause, every hydrant that is broken right now is non-reparable, so it's a replacement, full replacement.
So all, so all fifty of those hydrants are, need full repairs?
Uh, the fifty-four is, they're all four grizz, broken stems, non-replaceable parts, nothing you can order it. Um, old technology from basically the fifties and sixties. So there's nothing we can part out. We're hoping to get some, just some caps and some other ends like that, that we could put on some of the existing hydrants that are still working. But those in time will do the same thing.
Okay, so my question is, um, that this proposal, you stayed under the hundred thousand, but does it have any cost to the fire hydrants?
Right.
And you're, and again, we have no way of knowing, but you're anticipating thirty weeks to complete sixteen hydrants. That's your proposal.
No, I mean, I don't think, honestly, I'm just, I guess it'd take up to thirty weeks to fix it. Let's just say six hundred hours of overtime. Now, now we, we need thirty weeks, I don't think so. So some of that money we can actually allocate towards supplies or cars for the fire hydrants.
I understand, that's why I wanted to clarify. This, your, your proposal is ninety-five thousand salaries on the, is not including the cost of the fire hydrants. Now, the village administrator's proposal, um, a couple of things on this one. The, you said fifteen hundred dollars for salaries for four employees on Saturday, but then you said a total of twenty-five hundred, maybe three thousand, includes labor materials. But Kevin just said it could cost three thousand.
I guesstimated about fifteen hundred, correct?
Okay, so it's more. Your proposal would be increased by the same additional fifteen hundred dollars per Saturday. So we're looking at four to five hundred dollars a Saturday, providing it's four employees and it's three thousand maximum. We're going to go ahead and, okay, for the materials. Now, your, your email also said that some digging could, I'll be right with you, Kevin. Your email did say that there's some digging could be done through the week, when there is time, so that there's pre-digging done. So perhaps only when the employees get here on Saturday, some of the work's already done.
In a perfect world, yeah. We'd like to dig some digging on Friday, prepare the hydrant changer for Saturday, so we'll be able to get maybe two done if possible on Saturday. But again, and then, the most reverberating is, you know, they, they take a beating, our public works guys, folks. I want you to know that besides the water shut-offs and water repairs and the passing out notices and shutting the waters off and putting them on and helping people with their water issues and tree trimming and removal and tree pickup, branch pickup, street repair restoration, litter pickup, grass cutting, setting up meeting rooms, repairing issues in the village, in the building. Everything falls on our public works department. And whether we like our public works department or don't like our public works department, they are a vital program for this village. And, and one of the reasons why, and we're not getting a lot of people jumping on the top end of your proposal, Trusty, is that the village has for many years, and nobody's fault, nobody's applying, is they have reduced the amount of employees in the public works department. We are down to eight. One of them is the, is the assistant person, so they're really down to seven bodies. Doing all this work, and then we want to do hydrant change jobs, which is part of the project, but there's just not enough time and data to do so.
Correct.
And then you want to hire two additional people, take four people, you need four, at twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour, when the employees are making thirty dollars an hour, the union guys. So the union is going to say, "No way." Why would they allow that when you guys are cutting staff constantly? I want to hire two parts of a guy that's twelve fifty an hour. And I know, it's a proposal, all of us are proposals, tell them, you know, come back with a big bottle, come back with something different. I understand. And I appreciate you putting something out there. It's a discussion, it's something to get things moving. And that's what we're doing, getting things moving. We're changing hydrants and cutting trees. Not with this manner of just saying, "Okay, let's go with it." I don't think they're going to support that, because they, I just mean to say, I don't want to say insulting, because insulting would be like, flop.
Well, then, how much do our temporary workers that we hired from the summer make?
Some guys make twelve fifty and they agree that.
So what's the difference?
They're not happy with that, but they accept it because they're cutting grass, they're cutting grass. They're not doing all the works, they're doing the public works, they're doing the rest, and it's a big, it's all hard ass. And they agree that. They don't like that because they just pull over what the union laborer gets.
So now what's the problem? We're paying the same way that they're paying?
And they do agree that a lot with, but they agree with, they're not happy with it.
There's a little bit of difference with you, Kevin.
There's a difference between cutting.
Cutting grass and putting.
And taking a lot of our public works guys, they don't be public works guys, too. Again, it's just a, it's a, it's a discussion.
I wasn't asked if my question, by the, okay, I got it, I got it. Just, I'm just.
Because we're getting, we're getting back and forth, because, you know, some things that you said that I have to disagree with, and that's cutting, um, um, employees. We didn't cut anyone. And, you know, we were, we were trying to hire one, and we just haven't gotten to that point. But I, for the last five years, I don't, I don't know any time that we actually cut any employee off of.
You're wondering, like, exactly, are we small enough for?
No, no.
You were, you were fifteen employees, a lot of workers.
What I'm saying, sir.
But down to eight, I think they had, it's not fair.
I'm not, I only think I'm sorry.
Somebody does something somewhere.
No one, there's no, there's nothing to cut the last five six years in that department.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't say, I didn't say it was.
No, no, I didn't say that, but you're saying that.
I think that this village.
But your, but your, but your, what your, what you stated was, and that's why I'm trying to, to change that. You stated that it was cut, it was. You stated that it was cut, it was cut the last five years. But I'm gonna go back to trustee, what in regards to what is it that you were trying to, uh?
So what I was trying to say, and to make clear, was the proposal that we received by email from the village administrator, was proposing four employees at fifteen hundred dollars per Saturday, and now we're finding out that the labor and materials together could be as much as, um, adding another three thousand to fifteen hundred, forty-five hundred dollars per hydrant, and that this could be done, one hydrant per Saturday, that we could potentially get ten hydrants by the end of the year, weather permitting, and also taking into account, it is the holidays, there may be a good, a good, uh, winter this year, it could be a bad winter, we could have need for, you know, snow removals, so there's no guarantee. But, um, I just wanted to get the cost per Saturday of dedicating public works people to this front yard. And I think dedicating four people on Saturday, prime, every many Saturdays we can get, from now till the end of the year, at a cost of no more than forty-five hundred dollars for it on Saturday, and like Kevin weighed in, is that possible? Because if it is, we could potentially get between maybe ten to fifteen hydrants done by the end of the year, at a cost of forty-five thousand dollars.
Um, well, the parts again, I want to go over the parts, the parts themselves, the fire hydrant is three thousand dollars, that includes the fire, the valve, the box, and the stabilizer. The stabilizer just assists the box to be in place so we can shut the valve off. The dual fire hydrant on the north side of town, which is what we're working on, which is the hardest side of town to work with, and not usually a problem, um, on the town with breaks or anything, it's three hundred and sixty dollars for the tee, four hundred dollars for the cutting sleeve, there's two of those, and a hundred dollars for miscellaneous bolts and slams, which is just connecting points. Um, the average pipe that we have to put in is about three to six feet per side, which is about two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Rough estimate for that is forty-six hundred, so forty-six hundred dollars just in parts on the north side.
So now it's up to forty-six hundred?
That is all of the parts that will be needed to cut out the hydrant on the north side. Okay, it's not as easy as just going down to the bottom where the tee is and just unhooking changes, that's how the way the north side is set up. And even the south side has that similarity, but the problem with that is, it's been in the ground for fifty years. So the bolt holes start tend to rot out, you're not gonna attach a brand hydrant, so it'll rot out tee, and then you're gonna end up ripping the bolt right through the tee. So the cost is an average of, it's the forty-six hundred dollars just on parts. For regular hours, yes, the labor rig, if we do what we're talking about, that's a regular labor rig, which we can work with for, for the hours to do each other. But the parts are guaranteed, unless the parts, the pricing goes up, which we don't know, depending on what's going on in, you know, in the country and the world right now, potential for pricing to go up, could go up for supply and demand. So we're looking at an average of half price here. Can we do that in a, in a reasonable time, as long as, again, weather permitting, Saturday permitting, we can, we can put in hydrants on a regular basis, as long as we have, we're gonna do it, we can do it.
So you see that Saturday, four employees on Saturday at fifteen hundred dollars, that's definite. What's not definite is the amount of the materials that is needed to work with, but you're seeing.
The materials are definite, the materials are definite, that's a price matter, why?
Okay.
It's the matter of what we do, if we, like, like, uh, the manager said, that we start digging the hole on Friday, and the four employees installing that hydrant will not be a problem.
Okay, so you have employees that are willing to put the time in on Saturday to work this overtime, again, snow removal and every holidays aside. You've discussed this with your staff, and they're willing to do this?
And it was offered to them, and it's up to them to make those decisions.
They, it's up to them to make those decisions? That's all I have right now.
I have a comment. Um, this has been a, a really good discussion about fire hydrants, but I just want to remind you guys that this is a time-sensitive issue, it's also a safety issue. We have been trying to get these fire hydrants in this village for the last ten to twenty years. We need to do something, we need to protect our residents, and regardless of how much it costs, you know, sometime or another, we have to fight that bull. So I'm saying, it's a safety issue, let's get the ball rolling, stop delaying this, and get some work done. Simple as that, you have two thousand people that you have to address, and nobody comes up with all these different scenarios and stuff, forget that. Today is the same day it was twenty years ago, we need those fire hydrants fixed, period, so let's get to work.
I mean, Mr. Finch, you have something to add, doesn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Finch, I'm not getting you.
Um, I, I got to see both proposal, trustee Grant proposal, and the one from the village administrator, and I did discuss it at the, uh, talk with the treasurer. I'm in agreement with trustee Brewer, um, as I said Wednesday, this kind of issue for years. Um, I, I just wish, again, we can all say, all departments have been cut. I've been asking, I've been saying, do some business need a, uh, staff accounting and a finance department? Proud to be being here, with Mr., um, the previous financial director was here, because of the amount of work. And the analogy that I gave Wednesday was, we don't tell our police officers to stop doing arrests, because they've been cut too. Every department can say that. I've heard Mr. Hercules just say that, um, basically, you have the guys coming on a weekend, it's open-ended. Let's be honest, they not gonna come in on a weekend if they didn't sign up for overtime, just like the police officer. To teach, put out a list who want to overtime, they sign up for it. Uh, Mr. Wood just said, they may and may not do it. So honestly, I think you guys, for yourselves right now, if you think they're gonna come in on a weekend, when they have not been willing to work after three-thirty, I think trustee Grant proposal makes sense, because I know personally, I don't wanna give up my Saturdays, I hate giving up my Saturday, especially to put in the end of day. So it would just make sense to me, if we asked, without disagree with, that you have to ask permission to get people to work overtime, union-wise. But if they was to stop whatever they're doing at one o'clock, Monday through Friday, and work from one o'clock to six o'clock before it get dark, to exclusively do five hydrant, why is that, why is that not something tangible? Um, because it really costs about fifty-eight hundred dollars for this outside firm to do one fire hydrant. So, so, so that's the trustee Brewer, one way or the other, we're gonna pay for it. And unfortunately, we're gonna pay for it in outside firm, or we're gonna pay for it eventually, a resident's gonna sue you guys for not fixing a fire hydrant that you willingly do, was, was broken. So, my proposal, my suggestion, is, we have the money, in the water account, it's a million two plus. Talk to the members and ask them why they don't want to work overtime. Yes, I know they busy, I'm a VA member, and I understand what we're going, we have total, total, seven people. Not seven plus a, men public work director, not seven plus two farmers, seven in total. It's just a matter of the body deciding to go to the union and say, this is what they expected. Because they just got a raise, they just get paid the highest, some of the highest salary in the village. And you telling me, they can't do part of their day-to-day job, I know the trees, I know the branches, I know all that stuff that goes on. But, as trustee Brewer keeps saying, this is a sign time-sensitive issue, if they just get five done, it's five fire hydrants, they don't got to be households. This, this, this body talked about money all of last year. So if we follow the money, why would we waste it on outside firm? We have members of our collective body that know how to do the job. So, I don't understand why the union would be objective to trustee Grant proposal, because you're gonna bring in two new people? Well, those two new people, if they simple labor, let them be the one doing the trash, or putting door signs on people for water bills, whatever other mundane task has to be done, and having more senior people do the heavy lifting, which is the fire hydrants, the tree cutting, and whatnot, potholes and whatnot. There is a way that this could be done, it's called project management. So, just make, be aware of the body that, we bout to spend a hundred thousand dollars outsourcing on the low end, we bout to spend another fifty, sixty thousand dollars to have members work on a, on a Saturday. But yet, I watch this body tell us how much money we don't have. So, I, I just, it's just a matter of will, that's my comment.
Thank you, what I'd first like to see is, I have your proposal there, but I'd like to see the other proposal. And one of the things is, it's very apparent, Mr. Finch, how you feel about our public works department?
No, wait, stop, stop, trustee, no, no, because you guys say that all the time, that I don't like the public work department.
I know what. I let you talk.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
She's not gonna do that.
She has the door.
Hold on, hold on.
We'll go ahead and finish.
I let you speak, but I've listened as well, and I've, I've listened to what you've said. Now, one of the things is, do we really want to outsource it? No, I think it'd be done in-house. When you're saying they don't want to work overtime, I sit and listen to what you're saying. I'm looking at your proposal, and you're talking about temporary employees working forty hours a week. So are they going to get IMRF, are they going to get all the benefits? Because they're gonna work forty hours a week, so that was the first thing I was going to ask. Um, they're saying that it takes four guys on, uh, to do one of the fire hydrants. Um, and I have to agree, the fire hydrants need to be done, and it's been years. And, and they, they're slowly broken, they're slowly breaking, and they're gonna just add up. And what I'm going to say, Mr. Finch, because I do listen to what you're saying, and maybe you want to listen to your words when you're saying, I don't know, understand, we just gave them a raise, why don't they want to work overtime? It's apparent, I've listened to the tapes, that I just know how you feel about our public works department. Um, you want to refer to us as the body, that we all, you include us all, and it's not fair. Yes, we want this done, we have money in the waterfront, study it on what it needs to be spent on, do the, the fire hydrants. Now, we need to find out, is public works, will they work up the overtime on Saturday? Or will they work during the week? Now, it's going, it's getting late, so they're not gonna be able to do it on overtime after three-thirty, because it starts getting dark. Now, as far as this, that's what I need to know, trustee Grant, when you're looking, looking at forty hours for two temporary workers, they're going to have to get benefits. And I don't think the, the union would allow temporary, but when you talk about summer help, they're part-time, they only work part-time. So I guess we need to know what the difference is, and I want to see proposal side-by-side of what you're proposing, and then, we're looking at yours, but we know they're saying it's for workers. It's going to take at least four workers to do a fire hydrant on a Saturday. So, that's what I wanted to say, as far as this, when it came to the temporary worker, you didn't know what the difference was, well, summer help is only twenty hours a week. And we don't pay a benefits, this I believe we would have to pay benefits. And I think the union might have an issue with it, because it's forty hours a week. But it's, it's salary, so that's just my opinion, um, but I'd like to see proposals side-by-side.
Okay, so that's what you want to say, you want to see proposal side-by-side?
As, as what we're looking at, we're talking maybe doing outside and also doing public works, I think we need to really look at this, and then also look at how much money can we spend? You're right, we have the money in the waterfront, we have a lot of money in the waterfront. Take part of it, I'm not saying all of it, and try to get as much done as you can in the next six months, you know?
Okay, so you want, you want to come, you want them to come back with some hard numbers? Because these are kind of, these are low, low, they shouldn't take that long.
I wish it.
It shouldn't take that long to put together the next package here, it shouldn't take that long, trustee, will you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to delay this any further, we've got the money, the waterfront is supposed to be used for fire hydrants, we need to move out. I mean, this proposal calls for two part, two, um, temporary workers, we don't even have hired yet, we've got staff right now. I say we should move forward with at least getting started, we can always amend, we can always change, and go into another program such as this one later on, but right now, I would like to see public works start this Saturday. I would like to open it up to public works part of this weekend, and like to say, we got overtime for you, and I'd like to get started, and we can always revisit it. I'm, now, yes, whenever I say, as a trustee, that we need to start immediately, we need to stop pulling this off, it's not like we don't have the money. We don't have to borrow the money, the money is there, our resident safety comes first. Even if we start with public works, going out and doing a couple of fire hydrants or one fire hydrant every week from now until like, whenever they can, we're starting, we're showing the residents that we care, the money is there, I feel like we're holding the money hostage. And then if it doesn't work, then we move to plan B, or right now, plan A is, let's get this.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, you, I'm sorry, you guys have been talking about fire hydrants for quite a while now. One thing, one, excuse me, one thing that was stated a while back, that made a lot of sense, and then it was stated again tonight, you need to develop a plan.
The plan for man.
No, the plan for them just to, because I'm talking. The plan for them just to start working on Saturday is not a satisfactory, well-brought-out plan. A plan of action would be something comparable to what the village administrator sent to you guys via an email, in something similar to what trustee Grant, but just to say, oh, no, they're gonna start Saturday, which ones are they gonna start with? How is it?
Mr. Mayor.
I am out of order, and I can't tell you more than that.
Mad word, mad word, out of order.
Because when you guys do this type of planning or about complaining that you do, guess who turns around and after, I'm doing the unplanned, and that is me, and I'm not going to just sit here quietly and watch you guys create a disaster. It's time out for your.
The mayor's in the process.
It's time out, it's time out.
Mad word.
I, we have management, say something else, point of order, say something else, my word, I, you want to know, this is how you do this. This is how you do it, in case you need to know, you call a point of order to the mayor.
I insist.
And no, and then.
Mr. Mayor, point of order for your word.
Point of order, and then he accepts it, you don't keep saying, point of order, point of order, point of order.
You're not learning, and the trust is not learning.
Because you guys aren't being, you're not taught as informed individuals, and it is sickening, right? So now.
Mad word, mad word.
So that, so you don't take one of our, it's open order, just say.
That's a test of clarity.
Now, what we're not gonna do, I, I, I did it this time, because I didn't feel like trying to yell over everybody. But for a person to take the mic and just stand and start talking, that's not gonna happen again.
Thank you. And I want that I want that you to do again. But get yourself, please, get checked. And then you're very, very anxious, but this is a zoo.
But are you, are you going to listen?
No.
Wow.
Exit.
Okay, so then, so then you want somebody to respect you, then how?
I want them to respect you, but I think that they need to respect this entire process.
Why should they?
If they don't respect this process, I just push through, but then they fit the point without any thought.
How you know the question is?
Oh, please.
Why not?
You cannot stand up, you cannot.
Listen to him, to listen, to looking at this room, and he's in, oh, they're in the circle, they're there. Listen to you.
No, listen, listen to me, from this point on, if it happens, I will have to go to Jersey.
And you know what?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, so that you understand, and that's everybody, that's everybody.
With the Jersey.
Then why are we going to bring you back and forth?
Mr. Mayor.
Why are you going back to your, that's why, because that's, 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 that's what you feel, fine. But you're not gonna respect what you're, how you expect anybody else to respect what you're saying?
You know what?
So, that means say, I'm not going back and forth with you.
Mr. Mayor.
You're gonna ask me, you just asked me a question.
I'm through, I'm, I'm saying, I didn't ask you.
No, you asked a question.
Okay, I want to address, uh, trustee Todd, because he made that point, and, um, other trustees made the same point. I have no problem with public works, what I have a problem with is, let me say it, since you don't want me to say it, but the trustees that came in last year, you guys scrutinized, let me look at some trustee, will you? Trustee Todd, trustee Brewer, trustee Zinski, and maybe even something trustee Bell, any trustee grant. Everybody scrutinized all the departments, were they qualified, was a man put them in the right position, and all that. Trustee, trustee Brewer, first day of the meeting in February two thousand and nineteen, asked me about fire hydrant. That was nowhere in my job description ever happened and ever will be. I put subsequent to that meeting, put fifty-five thousand dollars in that budget for fire hydrant. How many fire hydrants was done between then and now? We're about to spend a hundred thousand dollars in this. We're about to spend a hundred thousand dollars in this budget. So when I say, "Why can't they do their job?" This is a saying, trustees, and not all the trustees included, that they're not wanting to give the finance department a two-point-nine percent raise, or two percent raise last year in the budget.
That's not true.
That is true.
That is not true.
That is so true.
Trustee Bull, you were back.
We, we made that conversation.
Let him finish.
For me, and I, and we asked, I put it, put it in there for now.
Way off the subject.
So, no, so, but the subject is, I, I'm in trustee Bull.
I was gonna get the fire hydrant fixed.
Hey, what's the subject? Your subject is fire hydrant pain from last year.
I'm asking the board for five minutes.
Okay, all that extra stuff over there, I was gonna get the fire hydrant fixed.
Do you have, ask the Public Works Department, I'm finding, trustee Bull? Ask the Public Works Department. If you told me find the money, I'll find the money.
Okay. I don't know when it's gonna start, I'm listening, I'll just start.
You guys, if I don't wanna listen. Okay. Um, in regards to, you know, as far as the fire hydrants and everything concerned, yes, we, we, we've beaten that horse for the last long as I care to try to think about it. But what I would like to do is, um, in the essence, you know, I still want to see something that we can go by, uh, and just go to cost or whatever, and then we can get that proposal, and we can get it out to the trustees ASAP and get a consensus. So once we put something in writing, and put it down, uh, that shouldn't take too long. This is Tuesday, you're happy to hear, you're happy before the weekend. All I ask is that, um, you give a consensus back, we talked about it, we went back and forth, and, um, give a consensus back, uh, to the clerk, and, uh, we'll go from there. The next item, now, I don't know if this is be resolved before next week. Uh, I mean, I don't, I want to see where it should be, even on the agenda, it's just a matter of seeing what, what needs to be done, how much it's gonna cost. And, uh, we can go from there, you know, I don't think we need to, you know, uh, because he needs to let his people know, uh, you know, they're gonna be working this weekend or next weekend, so they kind of, I can understand that. Uh, the next item is, uh, trustee Todd, our ordinance amending, uh, this is the amended decision, Division Six food dispensaries, I think you have two ordinances here. Uh, one is an old one, I guess that was the, the one that's been proposed, is that correct?
Okay, what, what do we have, um, and you're talking about, um, the mobile food dispenser? Okay. This would be, this, this one that the attorneys, um, drafted? And what you're going to?
That's the new one.
Right, you're gonna see lines through it, and that's something that, um, they had given to the ordinance review. Uh, because of the situation that we have, where people are popping up with, um, tents and cooking, you know, selling food, and so there's a question in that, so the ordinance needed to be looked at. There are several things with this ordinance. Um, now, if you, you're gonna see the line out, and what they've done is, they took the section, got rid of it, and replaced with the same numbers, this, what you see in front of you, that's all underlined? Well, we quickly, um, went through it, and there's a couple of changes that need to be made. But the reason I bring it to the board is, there's gonna be a lot of passes to this, so this just isn't where we're gonna go pass an ordinance, and there's nothing more to it. Um, but on this, for the temporary food dealers, you're gonna see under eighteen dash five forty-seven on B. It'll say, "Any person making applications for a license required by the provisions of the division," so I'll climb right into the village clerk. We feel that should say Community Development Director. Um, and then, in the same sentence, it'll just say County Health Department, it should say Cook County. Oh, okay. Yeah, so, ours, we're very minor looking at it, but, one of the things is, and you're going to see, I handed out, um, it was this Cook County Department of Health, it's, uh, an application for a temporary food service permit, and it's like twenty-five dollars a day that they charge. We have to figure out, because Cook County's Health Department, this is where I think they're gonna run into their biggest issue, is, if you have a tent, what is your, you know, like, do you have the sinks? That need to go in there, if, if there's a whole thing that is required with Cook County. So, our, um, ordinance review wants to meet with, um, Antonio Cooper, because he's Community Development Director. As far, as far as what we want to call this, what are we gonna charge, how are you going to charge, what kind of permit would you give? If it's only going to say, "Okay, this week I'm gonna be over here, and this week I'm gonna be over here." Now, I don't know if you've read through the ordinances, but, or through this ordinance, but, um, they could only be within, like, they had to be like three hundred feet away from a business unless they have written this permission. Uh, they're gonna have to hold a license from Cook County, or a permit from Cook County. How are they going to be inspected? So there's a lot of questions when it comes to this particular, um, ordinance. Now, on the one, um, on the back, it's eighteen dash five five zero, it's, you can set a penalty, if there's a violation of this. And our committee feels it should be five hundred dollars. But, um, I also included in your packet that Park Forest has similar stuff, so if they go through, maybe we can, might, maybe near off some of the stuff, or take some of it off, because they have things for, you know, peddlers, they call them, or they might have, um, as I was going through, there's different, different things that they have. Someone that might have a food cart, which would be different than the pop-up tent. So we really need to investigate further, so this isn't going to be done in the next couple of weeks. But I want the board's, um, um, input on this, as to, even though I gave you this tonight, maybe go through it and look, we don't, we're not gonna adopt exactly what Park Forest, but it gives you kind of a guideline. I can also check with other municipalities, how do they deal with that? You do have farmer markets, but those, they get a certain license, there are certain things that are required for that. So that's why I'm bringing it to you. We did look at this, but there was only little minor changes when it came to wording. But I would appreciate it if you would go through it, and give the thoughts, kind of look at, um, like, what's it, what's Park Forest, that was one of them, as to, kind of what they do in one of the addresses, so that's why I'm coming before you. I mean, I, we met, and if you have, you know, input out of it, you can always email me, because we're going to have to schedule another meeting. But I'd really like to meet with, um, Antonio Cooper in regards to this, as to how would we charge? Uh, I also think I'm, um, we want to talk to Tina from the Cook County Health, what is involved, because that's gonna be the biggest issue, I think, for the individuals that want to put up a tent and sell food. So you want to make sure that it's done correctly, we don't, you know, we don't want any issues. Uh, but I think that's a hurdle they might have to go over, so we want to make sure that we get it all put in place. But I just want input from the trustees.
Okay, is this, I'm looking at this, is this the ordinance that's in place that, that you're talking about? So this ordinance is in place.
The one that's crossed out, because?
In other words, it, it, there is, there is an ordinance that does exist about temporary food deals.
Correct, right. Currently, the one that's crossed out is what we currently have. And what they had done was take that ordinance, and just actually numbered it the same and replaced it. This, this one that you see is more detailed, it covers more ground.
What was the reason for this one?
Which one? Oh, that's for the, that's, that's the second ordinance, something you're talking about.
Oh, okay, so that has nothing to do with it?
No.
Okay, okay, because I was trying to compare, I didn't see the comparison, okay.
Right, and so I just want, but I, this is going, it's not gonna happen in the next month that we're gonna have this ironed out, because I, I have to, um, actually, like I said, get together with Cook County Health, talk to them. This is their application that people have to submit, it's a permit, actually. Well, they say an application for the permit, it's a temporary one, and they charge twenty-five dollars per day for it. So I think we really need to get more clarification when it comes to this particular, if you want to put a tent up and sell, we want to make sure that the person's in compliance, and, um, so, I just think, you know. So if you could go through it, you can always email me, you can call me.
So, did the lawyers actually cross this out? Because I see the name on it, I see all of our names on it, as if we passed it already, but we didn't.
No.
So they did cross it out there, correct, the lawyers?
That's correct, in fact, this, this is how it came to us. I had not set this off. This actually, when, there was an issue going on with, um, a pop-up tent selling food, then it was referred to, um, um, Antonio, and to our village administrator. And so we needed to get something, we, we needed an ordinance as to how, how do we address it. So they actually did this, and then sent it over to the ordinance review.
We, we, oh, so, you're saying this ordinance was actually just created?
Yes. No, the amended one, the amended, not the first ordinance. When you see this ordinance like this.
Right.
Okay, it's crossed out. That's our original ordinance, we have not done anything with what they're proposing.
So what was the one that passed, is what I'm saying?
No.
It wasn't, okay, so they, they created it, and they added, so what, they did their draft wrong?
What I'm saying is, it says the ordinance, they're amending the division.
Correct.
All right, so this is the original, right here. Anything that's crossed out is your original ordinance. We have not done, in other words, if I'm going to present an ordinance, okay, this is what we want on, this is what we want in there, we bring it to the board, we then vote on it. This is not being voted on anytime soon.
But somebody created this, that's what I'm saying.
The attorneys created it. I did not send it off to the attorneys. This was done when there was the incident with the pop-up tent.
Oh, so they just created this?
And so they're taking this one, that's mine now, they're using the same numbers. So if it says eighteen dash five forty-seven, you're going to see it eighteen dash five forty-seven. They've just replaced it. Instead of creating a whole new section, they've fine-tuned it.
But they've fine-tuned, okay, but some, they had used a template, so this is what I'm saying, they got this from whatever, and then they, uh, tried to apply it to Salt Village.
Is this an existing ordinance?
That's what I'm saying, this, this isn't existing.
It is an existing ordinance.
If this is existing ordinance, then why isn't the number on there? Hmm? You don't see the ordinance number on there.
May I make an attempt?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if it's existing, then it should be filed, which means it would be, but if it's not, then it's something that's a template, and then they're trying to, you know, um, make it have to go to Salt Village, I can understand that, because it has all, it, it has it as if it was, and it's being amended, but if it was never voted on, then why would it be amended? That's what I think.
May I make an attempt, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This ordinance that was presented from the ordinance review committee is one amending an existing ordinance that's already on the board. It's, and so, since this is amending it, what you have before you are the recommended changes, which causes it to be amended. So those areas that you see them striped out, that's the recommendation to remove those sections from the existing
That's my question.
ordinance.
What is the existing order?
The number, um, I can get that number for you tomorrow.
I'll have to see the board, that's all.
I'll get your copy of that ordinance tomorrow. Those that are underlined are the recommended changes to the previous ordinance.
Okay, I understand, that's why I was gonna see the order.
So, this is just as they present any other ordinance for us. They do not give an ordinance number until it's passed by the Board of Trustees, and the cover page is no different than, um, any ordinance that's presented for a vote.
Matter of fact, I understand, everything you said, except for the last thing, if it's a ordinance amending something, where is the, where is the ordinance that was the original that you're getting?
I'll get that to you tomorrow.
That's what I was saying, is this the ordinance that we presented? That's all I'm saying.
A long time ago.
Okay, that's all I understand.
But I'll get you that copy tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Our trustee Todd said it's a provision of two thousand and five.
I don't know whether, I, we'll have to look that up.
Okay.
Um, but I want to also state that when the attorney did this, they were checking with Cook County. Um, so they were doing legwork to figure out, to make sure that what's in here is in compliance with Cook County, okay? Um, and I thought I had, I, the thing that they had sent over to the ordinance review, and to you, Mr. Hurries, I thought I had the piece of paper there, so I can read what they exactly had done. But I can make sure you get that, Mr. Mayor, what they sent over to us.
That's all, I just like to prepare, that's all. If I have any questions on this, please, you look up, trustee Bull.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this just came to light a little while ago, because there was somebody that popped up with a tent. Are you familiar with this ever being discussed in the past? As far as, so this is new to us, so it's, it's good that we're doing our due diligence. But looking through the Park Forest paperwork, what I'm seeing is copy of insurance, identification, driver's licenses required, temporary food set, uh, service establishment regulations, retailers for service, occupation, tax number. So it just seems that there's a lot more involved than just opening up and selling food. So if we, well, my question is, it also comes with inspections. When you apply for a license to sell this food, it also comes with inspections. What I'd like to know is, how are our current restaurants that sell food, how are they inspected? How often are they inspected?
Okay. They're inspected, that's what we just passed, I think we just passed the health inspection contract, the health department. So they're inspected, I think, every six months. And they, they pay for that, if the restaurants pay us, or they, and then we have to reimburse, uh, Cook County.
So that, that, I just wanted that on the record, because I know we did pass that just last week. So this is something that we've always done, we've always had inspections done in our food establishments. So the fact that it's not a brick and mortar, but that it's mobile, or it's a pop-up, it still needs to be inspected, and it needs to be inspected according to whatever Cook County expects us to do. Okay, so I'm glad that we're, we're talking about this right now, but are we, just, are we doing our every six-month inspections with our restaurants as well?
Absolutely, they have, and that's part of the, uh, it is light, but back to what you said, this is not the first time I saw, um, food trucks or mobile. I've seen that before I was even involved in the village, as far as they drive through it. Now, were they, would they have, did they have to have license? I don't know, did they, uh, were they ever challenged? I don't know, I, like I said, it's before I became, and got into politics, but I have seen, um, in the last four, five years, I haven't seen any of those trucks out anywhere, not just in Salt Village anywhere, but they used to go pass and sell all types of things, ice cream and anything else, they'd sell on the trucks. So, and, um, as a matter of fact, it's, we used to have them over in the, you would sell more or less in the industrial parks.
Right.
And they would, they would be there, now, whether or not I sent anybody to run after them and tell them, I, not, and like I said, I don't know, but I know that they have, it didn't exist, but this is not the first time I've seen food trucks or food, uh, pop-ups come out of the village, so. But it's good to be, probably, that's what I was asking you about, because I'm not aware of this one. And, um, hopefully, now we'll have something in place.
And, and like I said, it would be in stone for everybody. We're not just using one person or one place as an example, but we have to move forward, like you said, the coach, the coaches that go to industrial parks. If somebody reports that, then we have to go there.
Well, they'd be, they, they were allowed to operate. I've, I've seen in the years where they were allowed to operate at, um, the different industrial parks, and, uh, they were selling food right there, and, so, but, okay. Anybody else have anything on this particular topic? Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Okay, the next one is, and the reason it looks like an old ordinance, because it is. Um, one of the things that have been brought to us is that the hours of operation, you know, that you cannot park on the street on That the hours of operation, you know, that you cannot park on the street on garbage day.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's what this is, we have, and it, and right now it says seven to three thirty. Well, I Okay, that, so that's why you have the ordinance, because that's what it reads now. And we reviewed it, and the hours should be, we think, six AM, because Some of the garbage trucks are coming through the neighborhood a little after six in the morning. I know in my neighborhood they are. So, we wanted to do it like at six o'clock in the morning, and maybe extend it till four. But I want your opinion, because I don't know how late, you know, the garbage truck runs. Are they, because after three thirty, they could park on the street, according to this ordinance. So, we want to make it earlier, because they are coming through earlier. Um, but we said we'll give it, you know, till four o'clock. Six to four, you can't park on the street on garbage day.
So you want to say, you, you asked me for a Amendment for the, for this particular ordinance to read six thirty to four PM?
Six.
Oh, six, or is it six thirty?
No, six. Six to four, but I want your opinion, I know they come early. So I don't know if you want to change the afternoon, because I don't know how late they run through the village.
That depends on, see a lot of times it depends on, and that's, the only time they come late is when, is after uh, holiday. When they're picking up the For sometime they, they, they come, you know, come pretty late, but um That would be something that, I mean, if anybody else had any input, she's asking to have the amendment to six o'clock Um, AM to four PM on garbage day.
No, I'm in agreement, I think that, I know where I stay, government comes around six fifteen, six thirty, so I agree with your six o'clock start time. And the four o'clock is just an extra half an hour, um, I think it's, you know, small, but, you know, um, six to four seems fine to me.
Is anybody else having it? Okay, the truck, uh, truck, if you can get that amended, is there anything else in here that you wanted?
No, it was just the hours.
Okay.
Um, that needed to be amended.
I mean, it's holiday schedules, yeah? How, how would you, how would you do that?
Well, in, in our handbook, it states, parents pick up days.
What do you mean by holiday schedules?
You know, the, they, they don't do this in my garbage pickup park, so it's on Saturday. Because it's a holiday month.
They don't pick them on Saturday?
They, they.
No.
They do pick them up. I thought they would pick them up, okay, I didn't know they pick them up on Saturdays. Okay, so, so you're saying, what are you saying?
I'm saying, you know, because I'm, I said it on my area, it's Friday, we have to try to have Friday mornings.
Okay.
So, the next day we actually, Saturday, Saturday, six, no.
So you actually have that?
Except for holidays.
But it, but if it's except for holidays, how, how do you worry?
Holiday schedules, according to our village handbook, President Hamble.
Yep. I just wonder how you can put that in there.
You want to see that put in the ordinance, except for holidays?
No, 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 not except for holidays, the days are going to vary.
Wait, you gotta pull your pants down.
The times are going to vary, according to the handbook.
The what?
This is how we call these days off.
Okay.
So, so then, if yours, yours is on Tuesday, so it's going to be picked up on Wednesday, mine's on Friday, it's picked up on Saturday. So we shouldn't be able to park the machine on Saturday. This is technically garbage day. See what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. Now, this ordinance doesn't mention dates, it's just the hours.
It's just hours.
It's just hours.
One of the days, of course, right inside the block is given a garbage pickup. So.
Which is supposed to be normal garbage pickup, right? Take the decision on Saturdays, we do?
Well, if the way, if, if, if it happens to fall on a Saturday, then it would be the intended date. So. So if you want to stipulate, if you want to stipulate On holidays, holidays, something like what you're saying is, is if I had, at the holiday or Friday, Saturday, we'd be picking it up.
So you want us to specify in the ordinance?
Well, you have the mirror, you have the mirror on the handbook, you know, for, for holiday days, on, on these, on these certain holidays. But you might have to put every, the, the numbers are going to change, but the days will be the same. So I'm staying, back to Tuesday, whatever.
We have to put that in.
I'm just saying, for July, they say.
Days will change. But every holiday, we have, may not be a holiday for the guy, that's, that's another thing.
That's true, I mean, the village, the, the Republic doesn't have to be
No, they don't.
As we, as we have.
No, they don't.
Uh, they, they're very hard, they're, they're like, I don't mind, maybe not.
Uh, six, I'm making it.
I understand. Yeah, whatever, you know, that's why I bring the board, we're going to amend this ordinance. So, is there something you want to see in it? And then I'll bring it back to the ordinance review before we send this off.
Okay, then, you're sorry. You can't put in there, except for it? No, include, include.
But you know, but if it's on a Saturday? Our code enforcement's not out, and I don't think the police officers, they, I don't know if they're going to take it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to. Hey, and that's what you're going to do. Print it out, print something like that.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm going to say, I'm not going to, I'm not going, I'm not going to even put that on record, that we do it, so.
I don't know if they are or not.
No, no, I'm talking about, holding for a couple of days out.
Right, I don't know, I'm not sure what's, I guess we need to tie that.
No, they should write tickets to.
I agree.
And they came, I'm not saying that they haven't. Then you say they haven't, it makes sense, but they get tickets. Alright, and then the other question going back, yes?
I personally am one of those that, my garbage pickup is on Friday. What happens is, on Saturday, once the garbage is picked up, people park on the street. I think that's why Trustee Bell was saying that. But I, when this was brought up on the floor, I think what public works says, they use that Friday. If they're going to do street cleaning, or street sweeping, or whatever, they use your garbage day, so they always had those hours to fit their hours. So, on Saturday, public works is going to more than likely come out, you know, about trees or nothing. And I am one of those houses that, my, my holiday, if it falls during the week, my garbage fits on Saturday. So I don't know how you want to change that, or if you want to, but as a rule, as long as I'm getting garbage picked up the way it is, it states here Corresponding side of the block is scheduled for pickup, so that means if there's a holiday, the corresponding day is going to be that Saturday. Do you really want to change it? Because it's just understood, what's the garbage, it's gone, everybody parks in the street. So, do we want to change it, or just leave it because it's Saturday?
Well, it's called.
Put it out there.
We can It's best not to talk about, I don't want them to come up Review come up, and then they change everything like they're going to talk about. So, I just want to make sure that if, if the way that you're talking, trustee, uh, uh, makes sense, Unless they want to have, have it there except for, uh, days that the, uh, garbage pickup falls on, on the holiday. Garbage pickup falls on Friday, then Saturday would be, uh I think like you said, garbage day falls on Friday, and, I'm sorry, holiday falls on Friday, and Saturday would be, would be a garbage day. And then the rules would apply to that.
Would apply, so you want to add something like that, so I don't care with the hours.
Right, right, now I was thinking, is everybody okay with the six?
The six to four.
Okay. Okay.
And then you want to see language in there to include some other, like a Saturday.
Yep, if, if, if the
That applies on Saturday.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, and that's all I have.
Okay, um Well, now I didn't think it could have been pressed, it was, I guess they do. Um, okay, the next item is, uh, matter of fact, if they can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to start by apologizing, uh, for my outburst. Um, and hopefully, the board and you will accept that apology, because It was out of order. However, I'm going to look onto the residential handbook. Uh, this has been presented Just for review. There are areas in it that really requires review. Um, this is looking at The old handbook, but adding additional areas in the, it's, uh, in this proposed one. Um, this is not a rush. It's just something that we've been working on and talking about for quite a while. And I want to thank our HR consultant, who helped to get this ball started, As well as trustee Williams, who took the first look at it and made some recommended changes. If you look through it though, um, you will see a number of areas that I did include, and I was Asking trustee Bell just then about the garbage pickup that he was referencing, because it's lightweight. I may have taken a sentence out. And if that sentence that I took out, if I took it out, is what's causing the concern, then I can gladly put it back in. Because I can remember Um, the pass book, and, and I'm just a little nervous right now. So I'm not seeing what I could have taken out, and that was, it was the language that said, until the garbage trucks pass. So that means that if they do your garbage at seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, Then, after that time, you can park on the street. That's, that was the language in the previous handbook, and as I said, I may have taken it out, but I definitely need to look at it In my quiet time. Okay, so, where do we go from here? I submitted this to you guys a couple of days ago, and some of you have provided feedback, some of it has been verbal. What I would ask, though, is that you just tear off the page, or write your name on it, tear off the page, however you want to do it, And communicate in writing directly on this document, uh, what your recommended changes are. One area, if you look at page four, I left that in, but I, I just, honestly did not see why We endeavor to give so much time and information on our board filtration system. Another area, If you go through, you're going to see little comments from me in parentheses where I would say I need qua, uh, I need clarification, and especially when it came to parking of automobiles On streets and disabled automobiles, it just seemed like That language just rattled on and on and on, and um So I'm going to really ask that you look at that. Another area that really needs your attention, I, I struggled with coming up with some language Where trustees are concerned in terms of your responsibilities and duties. And I just don't think that I was inclusive enough in terms of what you do. So if you can look at that piece and possibly, um, provide some input there as well. But then naturally, any other area, You're more than welcome to provide your feedback. I'm not going to go Back And give every recommendation that was made By a particular trustee to the other trustees. I will make The changes based upon Me doing greater research, because a lot of research has gone into just updating that book, I mean, a lot of research. In terms of our ordinances, I've looked at, um Some of the churches to make certain that information is accurate. I've looked at the secondary schools, I've looked at the post-secondary schools, to make certain that the language that I put For Prairie State and Governor State was accurate, so that we are giving, um Correct information to our residents. So, as I said, this is not a rush. However, it would be nice if it, if we could target maybe the start of the year For me to actually, for us to actually put it out. It will go on the website, and it will be available to anyone who comes to the village hall to request a copy. We will, and it will go to any new resident exactly, um, as it's distributed at the current time. So it's not going to incur any other cost other than the copy. And I am anticipating, um, doing it in a booklet form That's like this size here, but I played with it yesterday, and the font was too small When, you know, it just automatically went through the copier. So I just have to play with it to see if we can do something that's a little more friendly to old eyes Who, um Would need a larger font size. But to have it in the format that it has been given, I think that we can, you know, up our game and do a little better Than what we've been presenting. Thank you.
I have one question, unit, uh, this, I guess, page sixteen. I know you don't have one in front of you, but it's, but it says, in October vehicles, said the section needs help, is this brand new?
No, that was in there, that's me saying this section needs help.
So this was already in there?
That was already in there, and that's what I was saying, it really, it needs some eyes on it.
Okay. Alright, so as, as I was saying, if you have any, um, suggestions or anything that you have questions on, um Please hit it to her, um Soon as you can, and, um, we'll move from there, but I guess this is just a review right now To look at and kind of get an idea of what it is you want to put out, the book throughout to look like, correct?
And if there's other hot areas that you would want to include it, We can add more areas as well.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, trustee Williams?
I noticed that penal licenses was removed, we no longer require penal licenses.
Well, we don't offer this anymore.
Okay, good, I did, I just wanted to make sure. I do see that there's a lot of extra content, so thank you for the time that you took to do that.
Okay. Alright. Get to the part now, public comment. Public comment, if you, uh Okay, I'll Okay, public comment, all questions, comments will be directed to the mayor, each speaker, they Comment on any matter pertaining to the business problem, so each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Plus three minutes, and may I engage you today? How we live, or we both, please state your name. When you come up and, uh, we'll go through that just one second, I will try to get It tied up. Are you in that one?
I'll just keep it in.
Okay, you ready? Okay. Oh, the, the, I, what is it?
Trustee. Thank you, trustee Mayor. My name is Linda Washington, and I have a couple of things to say. I'm going to try to say as much of it as I can in three minutes. First of all, I want to say that whatever's good for one resident should be good for all residents. I personally have seen people tagging in the village ever since the summer. One is a particular reoccurring group, others are new groups, and every time I see them, I start to run and ask them, Who are you tagging for? And every time I see them, I talk about them and ask them, "Who are you tagging for?" And they'll tell me. Usually this occurs on the expressway, and on Lincoln Highway on Saturdays, and even on Sundays and Fridays, because some people get paid on Friday. I know that people have to see these people I get tagged. And I don't understand why it's not paid for. Some people are tagging back for money, and other people can't tag unless they have a matter from the police department, show the credentials, what they're tagging for, that their organization is a legitimate organization. So I think that there's a lot of bias that's going on with the residents. I have seen people have galleries in parks of more than thirty or fifty people, which I think is a part of the ordinance. If they do have more than thirty or fifty people, you're supposed to have a permit from the village. They're out there cooking food, having dogs, having all kinds of, uh, activities. I don't think that they have a permit to have that I can afford you to see if they did, and got the dates and places and times. People have been having all kinds of events all over this village. So if you're going to penalize somebody for making the ordinance, I think it should be for everybody, unfortunately. Because we don't have code enforcement on the weekend, I have personally observed people building, adding on, doing all kinds of stuff to their homes, the largest businesses. This, this summer took last week, and I have seen building going on. They know the village hall is closed, so they build these things on Saturdays, especially when the weather is nice, and nobody says anything about it. So if one resident look around and see somebody building or adding on to their house, or property, or business, and nobody says anything to them, then they all do it, so they're going to do it on the weekends. So I know that our code enforcement don't work on Saturdays and Sundays, we just turned that again tonight. So people do take advantage of that. The reason why I came tonight is because I think that there needs to be
One minute.
I think that there needs to be, um, someone to look at the communication. The village hall, this week I got a call from a resident. My number is all over this village, and people just come and tell me all kinds of stuff. I had a resident that was crying, um, very distressed, a senior, eighty-five years old. She said her husband had fell down, he was eighty-six years old. She had surgery on her arm, she couldn't get him up. So I, I would have the authority to call anybody to come other than nine-one-one, but they don't want that, because she says he's a very private person, and people would be hurt if she did that. So I tried to call to the village hall and talk to the mayor. I called, left a voicemail message on the list, uh, machine. I able to call one of your, um, close friends and ask them to get a contact with you, because I didn't have the authority to do it, but I was able to reach, I know the name of her. And he was able to, uh, intervene for that senior company. So it's just a charity thing, people can't get through, and she was crying to me on the phone. "I'm old, I'm eighty-five, I, I don't know what to do, I need help with you on the damn street." My heart was still broken for her, so...
Anyone else? Um... Tagging, I guess you're, I guess you're assumed that someone out there raising funds or whatever, or whatever organization. Um, I see it a lot, too, um, they should have some type of, uh, identification. Uh, if, if they don't, then anyone can call, please, if I see it, I do ask, um, someone to go and find out if they do have proper identification. Um, as far as more than fifty people in the park, um, I don't know where that comes from. Where it says that you cannot, if that's not going right, I may come back to that. Because I understand that our COVID numbers are going, so we may go back to, uh, phase three, which means closing the rest around, and then all the gatherings outside of the, uh, closed down, so. And then also, uh, the building going, the people using Saturday has been like this since I've been part of this village. I see people trying to circumvent, and you think that they're getting away with building on the weekends, because our code is not there. Only if they do come by Monday morning, and we see the trash, something on there, we should take it right into there if you don't have a, uh, building permit. So it's not that they got away, they just got away that Saturday. But they do, uh, our, um, code enforcement do move back. And they're asking us why they ride around if they see something they didn't see before, and they see it now, they'll ask for a permit for that particular thing that, that was, um, being done. And the last one, as far as the person that was elderly, and, um, my recommendation would have been, I don't know what, what happened, because I didn't hear anything about it, is to call the proper authorities. I don't have the wherewithal or the knowledge to do, and to go by, and if that person doesn't want the ambulance to come and take care of him, I mean, I'm sorry, that, that would be my, that would have been my suggestion, to call an ambulance, if I touch him or something, and then something happens, I'm liable for it. I would never suggest someone, especially, you know, unless it's something right in front of you, but to go to a person's house and assist or whatever, that's, that's what the emergency, uh, that's not, that is, but the emergency, uh, personnel is for, for your, uh, that's what you pay for, for ambulance service. And usually, ambulance service comes out to the house, um, they don't ask for money, uh, you know, unless you have any insurance to be known, then they don't, you know, you don't deal with it, I'll put it that way. But I would never take matters in the wrong, and I don't suggest anybody else should do that, too, especially at that age. Let the professional, the ones that know what they're doing, handle that. So, uh, the rules are just some of the things, I appreciate, um, bringing that up, uh, those different, uh, questions. Um, we're not going to have an executive session. So, uh, I'm going to ask for comments, uh, from the trustees, I'll start with Trusty later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we have a free food box distribution this Saturday at Moon Trail High School. Trucks have been getting there as early as seven-thirty, so we are starting to distribute as early as eight o'clock. Uh, we have started pre-registration at Moon Trail. If you contact me ahead of time, your boxes will be waiting for you. When you come, the remaining boxes will be on a first come, first served basis. This Saturday, there's also a blood drive in the senior center. We're partnering with Moon Trail High School, which is your honor society. The blood drive is from nine to twelve, pre-registration is required. You can contact me if you'd like to donate. And lastly, we have a kidney foundation, National Kidney Foundation, who will be coming to the village, South Village on Thursday, November nineteenth, from three p.m. to seven p.m. The village clerk and I are partnering on this event. We hope that people will come out, we're looking to get as many, possibly as forty to fifty people to come out and be screened. It's free kidney diabetes screening. Um, I attended this event in Linnwood along with the village clerk about six weeks ago, and I have been recommended. So, contact the village clerk or myself if you'd like to be screened on Thursday, November nineteenth. Thank you very much. And finally, um, I'm sorry that the discussion on the hydrants got out of hand. But, however, it needs to be taken place as soon as possible. I'm in favor of stopping the hydrants as soon as we can, however we can. You could always change the program up later on, and that's all I have, thank you.
Trusty Grant?
Thank you, Mayor, no problem.
Trusty, uh, Brew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was... My comment is, last, uh, Wednesday, we had a really good discussions about, uh, finance and what we should do, and most of it was about fire hydrants. As you guys know, fire hydrants, we haven't talked about this issue for the last twenty years. Something needs to be done. We have gone over and over with this issue, and there's no reason for us not to get it done, because we have the money, we have the manpower, let's get it done. So now, all this personal issue that comes back, who doesn't like who, whatever, stuff like that, I do believe that shouldn't be on the table, and we need to address these fire hydrants. Now, uh, last week, we had a, like I said, a really good, good discussion on, um, fire hydrants. Now, suppose somebody's house gets caught on fire here, what, what, what we gonna say, oh, we talking about somebody's personal issues? That does not make a lot of sense to me. You know, as much as I, I, I communicate, when it's, I never talk about people. And it doesn't make any sense to me, I'll just put a grill, and we couldn't get that issue resolved. We, like I said, we have the money, we have the manpower, let's get this stuff done. We also have a plan there, there was, there should have been a whole bunch of interaction. Uh, we had a plan to start Saturday. Why can't we start Saturday? There's no reason to start Saturday. Residents pay their tax dollars. They should get something for it. And all the things we're asking for is to get it done. I don't see what the problem is. I don't know, everybody wants this plan for this, this plan for that. Fifty people out there, it's worked out, it's, it's, it's simple. And if we keep going around and around with the same thing, it doesn't make any sense. We'll be waiting till the next twenty years trying to get some fire hydrants done. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so, I, you know, I, I'm through with that.
Trusty, Paul?
Here's my comment.
Trusty Bell?
The children of the age, if somebody, like Ms. Washington was talking about, if somebody needs help, call nine-one-one. They're not, look, they can't charge you. They're gonna help you pick you up and put you in a chair, they're not going to charge you for that. Call the fire station, call somebody. Call your neighbor, they called you, they called you, just call somebody. It doesn't matter, it's all right, just make the call. Give them land on the floor for a week, who knows?
Fire hydrant insurance must, keep sharing your prayers, thank you.
Okay, um... I just wanted to bring a couple of things, I don't know if anyone heard, but a plane hit down early this evening on Route Thirty, and ran off at three ninety-four. Little Sessa, which is, it was one person on it, on the plane, so the plane went down, I guess we were headed to Lansing Airport, I'm not sure, but I was on the news, and, um, I, I responded, went there, and tried to assist among other people. The next thing is Veterans Day celebration. The Veterans Day celebration will be eleven-eleven at eleven, so the November eleventh at eleven a.m., right here at the village. And, um, every year we do this, we honor our veterans, um, give a little something, something, and, um, we try to have a little something for them to eat, too, so that'll be here, so if you know any veterans, and especially the ones that live in the village, if something's come out, we would love to recognize them, and we'd love to, uh, have them celebrate with us. And with that being said, I'll ask for motion for the jury.
So move.
So move back, Trusty, Brew second, call the real call.
Trusty Grant? Trusty Tenzin? Trusty Todd? Trusty Williams? Yes, Trusty Bell?
Yes.
Trusty Brew?
Yes.
Um, before we go, I don't have all of the, uh, particulars in front of me for the, uh, the, uh, weight and funeral, but, uh, I think it's already been put out, I think you can put it out already.
It's on Facebook, people's name.
Okay, alright, and motion carried, good evening.